Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pew, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Good morning, thank you for being here and thank you for viewing. Welcome to the April 30th council meeting, which is a work session. We'll conduct a little bit of business, but mainly we'll be hearing updates on a number of items and issues that are very, very critical to this community. But we want to begin, as we always do, by asking God's blessings on these proceedings and really in everything we do. I'd like to call Pastor Flakes to the podium. And want to congratulate Pastor Flakes too, on the anniversary for this past week that was celebrated, seven years as leading the church. Been pulling on the rope with the church leaders for many years, but so congratulations to you and to Fort Street back.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Mayor. To the Mayor Pro Tem, City Manager, City Attorney, and to the council persons who are gathered and to all who are gathered here today. Let us pray. Dear God, we welcome you in this place. We welcome your presence. We welcome your protection. And we welcome your provision. We thank you for your provision of this mayor. We thank you for his leadership. We thank you for this council, who worked collaboratively with him. We thank you for our city manager. We thank you for the provision of health and strength. We pray that you will continue to bless their families with health and strength and protection. We thank you for this city, all of the departments who make up this wonderful government in this Fountain City. Thank you for all you have done, all that you will do, and all that you are doing right now. We ask the Heavenly Father your blessings now upon this mayor. Give him guidance. Give him direction. Give this council the guidance and direction that they would establish policies and procedures that will give access and quality of life to all the citizens of this great Fountain City. We pray your blessings that you will provide over the years to come for the fiscal strength that we will be able to have the quality of life that all deserve. Now, Lord, we ask that you will engulf this mayor, engulf this council with your love. Protect them with your power and continue to guide them in the way that will reflect integrity, that will reflect civility, that they will have the kind of example that these children and others who see them day to day will want to model. It's in the precious and glorious name of Jesus we lift them up to you. Let every heart and mind say amen.
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 And amen. God bless you all.
Pastor, thank you, sir. Thank you for leading us in prayer and thank you for what you do within this community. You have been knee-deep in this community for many, many years and we thank you for what you've done and we pledge to continue to work with you and your church in your future endeavors as well. So, thank you. Now, this is kind of exciting, man. I just met some great young people and they are here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, the students from Rigdon Road Elementary. If y'all would please come up front and lead us in the pledge. The rest of you, get to your feet for a moment, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Now for our school pledge, R-R-E-S. We pledge to be respectful, responsible, active, and safe. We are reed the roll bears.
Man, that was great. I actually got a little excited, started clapping too soon. Do me a favor, if you would, tell us your name, how old you are, and who's your teacher?
My name is Precious Nelson. I'm in 4th grade and my teachers are Ms. Chaney, Ms. Greer, and Ms. Webb.
My name is Jeremiah Justin and I'm in 4th grade and my teacher is Ms. Greer, Ms. Webb, and Ms. Chaney.
My name is Neveah Stevens and I'm in 4th grade and my teachers are Ms. Chaney, Ms. Webb, and Ms. Greer.
My name is Keishawn Simmons and my teacher is Ms. Greer, Ms. Webb, and Ms. Chaney.
My name is Aubrey Roberts. I'm in the 4th grade and my teachers are Ms. Greer, Ms. Webb, and Ms. Chaney.
My name is Caleb Crissler and my teachers is Ms. Webb, Ms. Greer, and Ms. Chaney.
My name is Basma Ellis. I am in the 4th grade and my teachers are Ms. Webb, Ms. Greer, and Ms. Chaney.
My name is Marcel Brockton. I'm in 4th grade. My teachers are Ms. Webb, Ms. Greer, and Ms. Chaney.
My name is Neveah Mayes. I'm 4th grade and my teachers are Ms. Greer, Ms. Webb, and Ms. Chaney.
Outstanding. And Andrew, do you want to come up and give your counselors here with you? And the school superintendent David Lewis is here. And Dr. Lewis, if you want to come up, you can say how old you are and what grade you are. But I do want you to stand and be recognized. We appreciate what you do.
Good morning. My name is Andrea Horn. I am the counselor at Rigdon Road Elementary School and these are our 4th grade peer helpers. They were welcomed this morning and this was an awesome experience, so thank you so much for taking the time out to recognize these young people.
Well, thank you for what you do. Thank y'all very much. And what a great way to start the day, isn't it? Before we get started, Counselor Thomas has an announcement, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a point of personal privilege. I know that everyone in our community is aware of the shooting that took place at the Temple in Poway, California last Friday. And as a result of that, Temple Israel, the congregation here in Columbus, is having a community-wide service this Friday at 6:30 at the Temple in solidarity of the community, in support of our neighbors in Poway. So, we just wanted to let you know that, 6:30 at the Temple Israel on Wildwood. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you, ma'am. We have the minutes ready for approval from April 23rd. I've got a motion, is there a second? Motion, second, to approve the minutes from April 23rd's council meeting. Any discussion regarding the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Minutes passed. And before we get into the work session, we do have one item on the consent agenda. If you'd hit your button, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items to briefly get action on. The first one is the rezoning at 5381 Veterans Parkway. General Commercial, it's ready for action.
Is the motion second to approve? Any discussion? If we could, please cue that. And counselors, please register your votes. All right, and that motion carries.
And then, Mayor, we have one more add-on resolution. The federal litigation claim is brought by Alicia Davenport. It's ready for approval of settlement of all claims in the amount of $83,000. It's ready for action.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion and a second. Any discussion? We do have Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm going to go into support this. I don't agree with it, but I will support it.
All right. Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? And that carries.
All right. And then, later on, Mayor, time permitting, we just need a very brief executive session, one matter and litigation.
Okay.
That's all.
All right. Thank you. And as I said, this is a work session, so I'm going to turn it over now to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good morning. Mr. Mayor and Council, first on my agenda, I've got a presentation on Georgia Healthy Cities. And I'm going to call on Carolina Rodriguez to come forward and introduce our guest. And I will say that this group came in to one of my meetings and presented the Georgia Healthy Cities presentation. And I thought it would be important that they appear before this council and present that same information to you regarding our city, our health. And in fact, I saw our superintendent of schools, Dr. David Lewis, and told him about this report and invited him to come and listen to this report as well as, obviously, he's over the school district and in some areas of our city where it will, these numbers and information impact our school families. Thought it'd be important that he would hear it. And then I knew that the legislative delegation was going to be here today and thought I would put this first and then they would follow this update because I thought it was information that they would like to hear as well. So, with that, Carolina Rodriguez.
Carolina, before you begin, I think even though they are going to be recognized later, I do want to welcome to the chambers our legislative delegation who are here today. We appreciate everything you do and I know we're going to be hearing from them, but I thought protocol should dictate that we welcome them first. So, thank y'all for being here.
And I wanted you to, as mayor, to introduce them, Mr. Mayor, at the...
Yeah, at the appropriate, and we will when we call up Representative Smiley, but we do want...
But Carolina Rodriguez is one of our bright and shining stars in this government. She's in Community Reinvestment and she works as our real estate coordinator and we are proud of the work that she does within our government. You don't get to see her much, but she is doing great work behind the scenes. And so, Carolina, would you introduce our first guest this morning?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, counselors. Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Carolina Rodriguez and I'm an urban planner with our Community Reinvestment Department, working for the awesome Laura Johnson, overseeing our land bank authority. And I'm really happy and pleased to welcome back to Columbus the team from the Atlanta Regional Commission and Neighborhood Nexus. We're also very pleased to have with us this morning some colleagues from our Public Health District, Jack Lockwood and Dr. Asante Hiltz. Also Nancy Williams at Piedmont couldn't be here this morning, but she's also been a wonderful collaborator on this project. So, today I'll be introducing Bernita Smith. She serves as a Director of Neighborhood Nexus as Principal Planner at the Atlanta Regional Commission. In this role, she leads large data visualization and community projects that help groups ranging from neighborhood organizations to city officials and multinational nonprofits better understand the communities where they work and the impacts of their efforts. Bernita holds a bachelor's degree in environmental planning and design from Rutgers University and a master's degree in city planning from Georgia Institute of Technology. And we're pleased to welcome her and her colleague, Michelle Long, back to Columbus and present to you on this data visualization toolkit to better understand the health of our community and what we can do about it. So, please help me welcome Bernita.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Mayor Pro Tem Council. I'd like to thank City Manager for inviting us. And I'll start talking about the Georgia Healthy Cities Project. In 2017, Robert Wood Johnson Foundation sent out a proposal for innovative solutions to healthcare using a dataset called 500 Cities that the CDC Foundation developed. And we were one of 10 groups around the country that actually won the award. The Neighborhood Nexus is a program collaborative between Community Foundation of Great Atlanta and Atlanta Regional Commission. I work for the Regional Commission. What we decided to do was build health and wellness toolkits for four cities across Georgia. And our main goals was to drive health conversations, strengthen community partnerships, and have an open community conversation about policy and health equity. Our four cities we chose was Atlanta, Savannah, Columbus, and Albany because they represented four different entities, kind of geographic areas around Georgia. Our health and wellness toolkits involve three things: analytics, visualizations, and community workshops. So, the little bit about the project is, Robert Wood Johnson Foundation is really into looking at the social determinants of health. These are what determine how we live, how we work, and how they integrate with our health. And what helps improve our health, what actually decreases our health. So, they go from neighborhood and built environment, health and healthcare, social and community, education and economic stability. So, the CDC project actually took, looked at 500 of the largest cities in America and looked at it through 27 different health measures: health outcomes, prevention, and unhealthy behaviors. And so, they developed a protocol on them and now you can look at, see what is the highest prevalence issue in your community. And in Georgia, there's 11 cities in there, from Albany, Atlanta, all the way to Warner Robins. We don't have every city, but they chose 11 and then we chose four. And so, when we look at Columbus, what we decided to do is take that data out and then rank it. So, we're comparing apples to apples and how does Columbus fare with the rest of the country. And when we look at it, how it fares for the rest of the country, from 1 to 500, Columbus ranks 396 in overall health, 436 in the health outcomes areas, 174 in prevention, which is awesome, and 431 in unhealthy behaviors. What this says is there's a lot of room for improvement. So, there's a lot of ways we can come up with innovative ideas to help increase Columbus' health rankings. So, when we look at that, that's the overall community, but we know from neighborhood to neighborhood, health varies based on those social determinants of health. And so, when we look at it, Columbus has 53 census tracts and you can see the darker areas kind of have the worst overall health rankings and the lighter areas have the best. And you guys got that big military base in the between. So, we built a tool where you can actually look to see what's the highest prevalence issues in Columbus. And what we found were COPD, asthma, diabetes, smoking, and arthritis are some of your top issues in your community. And we looked at them and we sort of lumped them all to like diabetes, respiratory diseases, and arthritis. And we started focusing our research on that area to address those concerns in Columbus. And so, when we look at a deeper dive in the smaller areas, you can see the areas where asthma has the highest prevalence, which is in the darker areas, smoking has the highest prevalence, and COPD. So, the darker areas looks at where the highest areas are, where the highest risks are in Columbus for each of those. And then, when we looked at it, how does it look on the social aspects? Poverty, race, and smoking versus asthma. And you can see where the pattern, there's a pattern that flows. And then, when you look at it more and you look at it and do a deeper dive, which you can do with our visualization tools, you can see that it's more than just race that influences those who have asthma. So, you can see where poverty is and where race is and then smoking. And I'll show you when we get to the tool. And so, what we did, we came out and we had an introductory meeting and from our partners from West Georgia Central, Carolina, Piedmont, and we talked about the issues and then we held a community workshop. And then, we got more feedback from the community and it was great because there was more partners in the room and more health advocates. So, they actually talked amongst each other and then decided on a plan to start working with each other on issues. And when we came forth with the city manager, we also talked with the city directors and found out the issues that are pointed out here are also the issues that Columbus as a city face when they're with their medical providers. And so, I will show you the tool we actually built, which you can use on your own. Okay. So, the tool that we built, this is our website, georgihealthycities.org. This is our final product for the Robert Wood Johnson Project. Okay. So, if you go to target cities, each city that we worked in is represented and I'll click down to Columbus. I think I hit it twice. Okay. And we did a really brief about some of the main factors that you can see as it compares to the state of Georgia. And then, we did a deeper dive and looked at your health risks. Oh, so if you look at diabetes, we give just an overall talk about where diabetes is centered at and which neighborhoods and the same with, and then you can look at the social and economic factors. So, we just did a brief summary here. And then, when you look at the dashboard, it's all four cities are representative. I'll click on Columbus. And if you wanted to look at a different, I don't know where this mouse is going. If you wanted to look at a different category, you just pull down and say you wanted to look at prevention issues.
I want you to mention some of those neighborhoods.
Okay. So, if you look at the prevention issue and then you pull down an indicator and you say, "I want to see where we are with adult men 65 who use preventive services." And you can see where the highest areas are. And you can see this is where the adult men who use services are. So, if you were planning a health project in these areas, you kind of would see, go through it and say, "Well, I'm not sure we really should do a project up here revolving older men. I think we should probably do one down here or up there." So, if you really just wanted to see it, you can actually put a little square around there and it'll just highlight. And you can just click around and see. Now, what we did was, we built a story map tool. And you can actually go through here and pick one of the areas. So, we know diabetes doesn't, most people don't die from diabetes, they die from the cool mobility that has to deal with diabetes. So, we'll look over here, we'll pull up diabetes, and you'll see some of the health-related. So, if you look in this neighborhood... So, what you can do is, actually, we have a swipe tool. So, you see this area? This is the area by the cemetery? Carolina is my expert on the neighborhoods.
Carolina.
You can stand by the...
Right. So, the census tract that looks a bit like a banner is Casita Road area. The Casita Road, yeah, sorry, Casita Road and Winterfield neighborhood area.
And this area is in, I mean, City Council District 7 down here. So, you can actually just click it and then you can see what is, that's a high rate, so 97 percentile of diabetes. But the cool part about this is, I have diabetes up and then I have stroke because those two are related. And now, when I swipe over, I can see how it does on strokes also. And again, you see the same pattern, that this area also has a high risk for stroke.
And what area is that?
It's the same, City Council District 7. So, I can click on this, this is... Yes, ma'am?
Oh, yeah. I'm like, you gotta come here.
Okay. So, when I pick over on this one, I can look and see also, this has a high prevalence of diabetes. And this is in City Council District 3.
And what area is that?
Which area is this?
That's South Columbus. That's near where we are now, actually.
And this area right here?
Macon Road, south.
So, when I zoom out, you can see actually where the dark areas are and this is the city council districts. And you can actually choose of all the things that is related to diabetes. So, if I wanted to overlay to see where kidney disease were, so this is where the highest areas of kidney disease. And in this area right here, Carolina, which district is that?
Right. So, this is, again, a lot of these neighborhoods are going to have overlapping prevalence indicators.
Yes. You'll see the pattern that flows through.
District or districts?
This is Council District 3 right here.
And what area is that?
That's, again, this area, Macon Road, south.
You're talking to people watching television, okay?
Okay, yes.
Sorry. And in this district up here, we're looking at another high area. That is City Council District 7 at the top of it. This district right here, Carolina? It's 7, it's Council District 7, which has a high rate also.
Right. And that's the neighborhood that includes North Highlands, the census tract that includes North Highlands neighborhood.
And if you continue to go down, you can click down again and you'll see where, how it rates on the socioeconomic issues. So, you can zoom in one area and it'll pop up where poverty is the same, it'll show you the same rate where poverty, where race is, and so it'll give you a good picture of what area. So, if you were more concerned about where are the highest areas of African-Americans and then you can actually look to see what are also the highest prevalent risks in those neighborhoods. We're going to move to the next one. And what we realized is that the neighborhood amenities do make a difference and we realized that. So, when you see the blue areas, these are WIC-authorized stores. And we chose WIC-authorized stores because it's a federal and they have more consistent data. But what we didn't realize is WIC also authorizes CVSs. So, that's not healthy food. So, there's a lot of...
What was that?
CVS, CVS actually, you can be, CVS is a WIC-authorized grocery store. Not sure how they got that authorization, but it is. So, when you look through and you start clicking on these areas, which is why we made it available, you see that's a piggly wiggly. So, in that neighborhood, the same neighborhood we've been talking about, the same, this area right here, you can see that we say that diabetes is a high risk, but they don't really have that many grocery stores, so they're lacking healthy food options. And in order to increase, you know, decrease diabetes, it's also good to have, to have healthy food options. So, we also have where the fitness facilities are and where the childcare facilities are. So, if you're a mother and you can't, and you have to deal with childcare, running around, running around, looking for one, then it's really hard. So, we do a project for Decaf.
And when you say fitness facilities, we want to make sure that we have recreational parks and playgrounds and so forth in those areas because everybody can't go to a fitness facility, obviously.
So, we were able, from the GIS team here, which helped us tremendously, we were able to pull in where the walking and the bike lanes is. So, if you look in this community, the Hamilton Road area, you'll see that there's no, it has a 92% risk of diabetes, but the main issue is, they don't have a walking or bike and they also don't have any fresh food in that area. There may be small stores, but they're also lacking things in that area. So, we tried to make a tool that you can use for planning purposes. And then, this tool, the Access to Care, is a really good tool that we also developed where you can see where the Medicaid providers are. And if I take off, this is all healthcare providers. Now, when we, I'm going to zoom into a neighborhood for you. We'll zoom into the same neighborhood that we're talking about. And so, you can see that in this same area where it's a high risk of diabetes, they're also lacking Medicaid providers. Now, they have other providers, other healthcare. They have some healthcare, but when you take away... They have some healthcare, but when you take away all healthcare and just look at those providing Medicaid, you have a lack of them in that community. And they have a lack of health centers also and hospitals and dialysis facilities. So this gives you a great tool for looking at the larger picture of health in Columbus. And I'm going to give it to Michelle Close for us.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Long. Thank you all for having us here today.
Good morning.
Good morning. I was invited by Bernita to talk to you all about next steps and how you can continue to use this data moving forward. And so I have four points I'd like to present. The first one is that you can use this tool to hold convenings with stakeholders and constituents in your community. Secondly, you can use these data results as a base for future planning and projects moving forward. Thirdly, you can continue to use this tool to convene your healthcare providers and advocates in this city. And then lastly, which we love this, you can ask your GIS team to add this data to your system so it's layered with other issues such as housing, business and infrastructure. So in closing, thank you all very much for inviting us here today, City Council, City Manager. We hope you continue to find this data helpful and use it creatively to build a stronger, healthier community.
Thank you.
Well, there's a number of councils, councillors that have comments. And one of the overriding comments I want to make is I think this highlights the significance of advancements in technology. Because to be able to collect the data as a first step, as they have done, and then to be able to drill down in the analytics piece of it allows us to be much more focused in how we structure our advocacy, how we structure our planning efforts, how we deploy our recreational facilities as the city management. And this is critical in this particular initiative and in any other initiative that we undertake over the next several decades, we're going to have to use data that has been captured in order to identify the areas where we really have to get a move on, where we got to pay attention to some of these areas. So thank you so much for that.
And Ms. Mayor, I know the council members may have questions, but I wanted to say, obviously, it would take them several hours to really do real justice to what they have, but we just, I limited their time here today. I wanted you to get a, kind of a snapshot. But they've got a lot of information they can leave with us, as they mentioned, our GIS. And we're going to try and dive a little deeper to see what we can glean from all that they have. But obviously, it would have taken longer and, but they are available for questions.
Well, and this does bear further discussion. We should have maybe even a public meeting on this to allow people, invite stakeholders, invite healthcare providers and try to convene an opportunity where we can spend a little bit more time just on understanding what this tells us about what our opportunities are. I'm sorry.
And I was going to say, I was able to spend more time with them, but it blew me away and I felt like you guys got to hear, you got to see this.
This is good stuff. Council Barnes.
This just whet my appetite. I mean, it just. And, you know, you can see just how much socioeconomic situation plays into something like this here. And, you know, the Bible says, "My people perish for lack of knowledge." Something like this here shown, and I'm glad you mentioned it, having maybe forums somewhere, a neighborhood where people can be educated. Because the first step in health prevention is education. And, but the statute, now, I would be interested to find out what gerontological studies you have with age groups. Because you know, the longest living, the biggest living cohort is between, I think it's seventy-five and eighty-five. Fortunately, I'm among that group. But what's interesting also is the fact that if you, if you look at the medical data, you see that they are limiting the number of preventive test procedures that I have a big problem with. Have you come across anything like that where?
I think in the future with health data, what you said is now that Medicaid and Medicare aren't paying for preventative care, I think we're going to see that hot, that risk increase greatly in all the communities because they're not getting that option. And I didn't know that until my mother went for a mammogram and told me that they're no longer paying for that.
And that's horrendous because everyone knows that the incidence of cancer increases with age. So it seems like it's, there's a disconnect somewhere.
So if we start looking at the data now and know where age is and know where the number of, from this data right now and look at the high risk, those are things that maybe we can get the mobile units out. And Piedmont, I know Piedmont has a great mobile unit, but we get that out or fund those more or partner with them in order for them to receive more funding and start that, getting more women to get mammograms.
I want to tell your mother, just for my own, how old is your mother?
Seventy-eight.
You see? So they are, and I noticed that this is nationwide.
Yes.
That this is happening. But the way you can get around it, by the way, is to have her, what kind of a dialogue? Does she have a physician, a good one?
Yes, she does.
The way that she can get, maybe I said, let me speak to you offline. Let me speak to you offline and I'm going to tell you something for your mom, okay?
Okay. But I think that's the way, we can use this data a lot to help start partnerships now.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Woodson.
I'd like to say thank you very much for the, for the data that you have provided. It's very enlightening. I tend to agree with the mayor. I think it's something that we need to really publicize. It's something that we could probably do a little video and use it on our access channel to educate people to look, you know, into places that can assist you. This is the website you can go to.
Yes.
And when you were talking about diabetes, I was laughing because last year I was, you know, I was diagnosed and asthma to top it off this year. And so it is, you're right, there is not a lot in that area that you can get help from. You have to go all the way north to get help. And that's something that we should try to encourage health providers to kind of come over and help a little bit more. And I think other agencies, medical agencies like hospice and the Alzheimer's Association, I think those agencies should be part of it because that is seen to be growing in Columbus with a lot of retirees moving to Columbus. And I think it's very important for our staff. I'm interested that we, when we go out to the public, I'm interested for us to be able to provide them where the parks are, where activities are that they can go to. In our presentation, as we go into those communities, say, these facilities are there. We have over sixteen miles of bike walking and trail. I think that in those communities, we need to go in there and identify it so that they know those resources are there for them. I think those businesses that are in those areas should be invited personally, Mayor, a letter to go out and say, we need your help. Your livelihood counts on these individuals, well, these individuals need your help. You know? It's just food for thought. I thought it was really excellent.
Thank you.
Because I'm even working on something, so it gave me a little bit more ammunition too.
Okay.
And it's in the help issues, I'm working on some. So it was really perfect. So I probably, if you don't mind, you can leave a business card or something?
I left it, it's in the back of the PowerPoint.
Okay. So, because I would like to have a conversation with you.
Okay. And if you go to our website, you can read some of our findings from our Columbus workshop and the discussion that we had amongst our stakeholders. But you're more than welcome to call me.
And I think with the problem with Medicaid and stuff, I think this presentation, our legislators, you know, should be looking at, be provided to them so they can see what their constituents really need. So when they're in Congress and fighting, they have good ammunition to say, here's a good, here's one good point here. Look at in one of my communities what's going on because of all these. So maybe we need to gear money into having a healthy community. We have a healthy community, our economy grows.
Yes.
Our businesses grow and our quality of life. So this is food for suggestions and thought, but thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Crabbe.
Carolyn, I have a question for you. How, how many pieces of property does the land bank have in some of these darker areas? I was thinking we might be able to use those as community gardens.
Right. There's definitely an opportunity there. The land bank doesn't really have a lot of inventory, but there, when you look at the number of vacant, abandoned and tax delinquent properties in some of these areas, again, there's overlapping, you know, prevalence. So I agree.
Okay. Let's try and put that on our radar with this.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Thomas.
Ms. Smith, you, your presentation today hit it out of the park. And you, I think, are very fortunate that not only did you get to speak to the city council, but we had our legislative delegation here to hear what you were saying. And I know that they take very seriously their responsibility to make sure that our city gets what we need. We have Reverend Johnny Flakes, who is one of, as the mayor said, one of the leaders in our faith-based community in Columbus. And I know that, given his past record, if there's anything that we need to work together to do with the faith-based community, Reverend Flakes is always willing to do that. To have the superintendent here, I was thinking as the mayor was saying, perhaps we need to have public meetings. We can have these meetings at schools and have the teachers and the, you know, the parents in that community hear what you're saying and how we can move forward. So I want to thank you for your presentation this morning. Website is?
You can spell Georgia anyway. We have it in there.
Great. And I do think that, that it will be very beneficial to our entire community. Our community works together all the time.
Mm-hmm.
And we pull together and it, we, I think we are of the mind that it doesn't matter who gets the credit as long as it gets done. So thank you for your presentation and don't be surprised to hear from one or all of those groups that I mentioned.
Okay.
To come back and do it again.
There's no problem.
And one, one quick question before Counselor Barnes. We actually were not too bad in the preventive.
No, you were great in preventive.
And I don't, I don't want to deep dive into it, but what, what, what does that entail?
I'm going to go really quickly for you.
And the reason I ask is because I know we've got a number of initiatives throughout the community, such as community gardens. They're not as widespread as we like them. But, but I know we had a chance to walk through Mercy Med yesterday and talked about how they're serving one of the more underserved areas and the progress they're making in the preventive stuff, so.
So some of the preventive measures is visits to doctors for routine checkup, visits to dentists. Actually, Columbus does a really great job with the number of folks that go to dentists. Taking medicine for high blood pressure, cholesterol, mammograms, giving those overall checkups on a yearly basis. And so what this data does is look at those of eighteen and above, just to give you guys an age kind of range, it's eighteen and above. So, yeah, Columbus does really well. And I think that has a lot to do with your preventive programs at your medical facilities.
Well, and the challenge I think they face is changing generational tendencies.
Yes.
Trying to encourage people to take, to take advantage of the, the parks, of the walking trails, of the discounted vegetables that are grown in community gardens. And that's a tough term. And it's, and that's where the community advocacy and the faith-based community and the civic organizations have an opportunity to help us spread that word.
Yes. And Mayor, like when you said the generational, so if your family's not used to going for preventative care, you're also more likely to have high blood pressure, which will increase throughout the generations in your family. And if you don't have access or don't know where the access are for the walking trails or you don't feel safe in those areas, and it's about, you know, highlighting those areas and making sure that people understand that there are safe areas and you can get these by just free. You don't really need to join a gym.
Thank you. Counselor Barnes.
Just some Etta girls. Where's Laura Johnson? Laura? And you, I want to thank you. You mentioned something that's huge now, capital H. That's community gardens. I got involved in this when I was in the military, stationed as a recruiter in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Blighted area is what they did. The city allowed people to put gardens there. If they tore down a building, they gave the people the incentive, clear it up and started going. That is huge when it comes to health. And the reason I'm having Laura, you see that young lady right there? She's a gem, I just want to tell you.
Oh, yeah.
Because she's helping people and that young lady standing next to her. There's going to be some people that's going to be contacting you, reference this Laura. Because this is huge. Because even among seniors, and I'm going to mention something among seniors, they did a study and seniors that went out there and they gardened with the physical activity. And plus, they had the opportunity to eat the fresh vegetables. That's huge. And so I'm really glad, Mr. City Manager, because that young lady right there is thinking forward for the community. And the young lady next to her, she's the point of contact. Laura passed up a ton to her. I want to thank you and I appreciate, there's going to be a number of people, seniors, that are going to be calling you. And Carlene Focker for the Piedmont Valley. We had an extensive conversation last week, reference community gardens, and I gave her your name. So thank you, so kudos for your staff right here.
It also helps with involving the schoolchildren also with community gardens. They actually see it happening, they can be encouraged. And it's like the recycle program.
Right.
And I think this would be a great program to involve your school aged children.
Absolutely. Well, I don't see any of the questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What a great, great tool.
Thank you.
I think the challenge for us, Mr. City Manager, is, all right, we got it. What are we going to do with it?
Absolutely.
But I got a feeling you're going to bring some ideas.
Yes. Ms. Mayor, I'm going to yield to you to introduce the delegation as they bring forward the results of the 2019 legislative session.
Yes. And we are honored to have several members of our delegation in the chambers today. We hated that we went a little bit long. I thought it was important that they hear this, but Representative Richard Smith, I know, had an appointment in Atlanta. But we do have with us today, our spokesperson today and the dean of the delegation, Representative Calvin Smyrie, Representative Carolyn Hughley, and our freshman senator who did an outstanding job on his first time in Atlanta, Senator Randy Robertson. So welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank City Manager Hughley for the presentation. I had mentioned it to the delegation and, and of course, we work with Bernita Smith on many occasions on various issues in Atlanta. And to have her expertise and to kind of dive in this type of health preventive and healthy matters is good for the community. So we look forward to a continued dialogue with her, with you all on those issues. And when you start talking about health and then, and then I thought, I was sitting there thinking about, you know, Mercy Medical School and how that's evolving and how the members of the delegation were helpful in getting the nine million dollars in the budget and working with our various health institutions here and community-based institutions. So, so, and I want to know what areas are prevalent for allergy. Because every time I walk outside, I sneeze, you know? But here and there, we delighted to be here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, the city manager, the city attorney, who we work with daily in Atlanta. And to all the members of the council, we are delighted to be here. Richard Smith had to leave. He has a twelve o'clock, eleven-thirty in Atlanta. I have a twelve o'clock in Atlanta. Randy has a twelve o'clock in Atlanta and Representative Hughley has a ten-thirty in Columbus. So we're all on the clock, but we are delighted to be here. And Representative Buckner and Representative Smith are out of town and Senator Harbison is in Atlanta on community work. So, but we're happy to be here. We, the staff got in touch with me and Ms. Johnson and I passed out the items that were presented to us as a council by resolution. Only, that's one that's not on here. one that's not on here that I will talk about in just a minute, but I'm going to briefly run through most of these, and then ask the members of the delegation if they have anything to add, and of course, try to entertain any questions that you might have. Of course, the first one deals with the issue of TAD and ethics, and in my meeting with Joan Council, they tell me that Joan Law already covers ethics for the public employees, and they consider that as part of that. On the second one, I-14 is one that we, you all gave to us, and Mr. Lumpkin has been involved in that, and I-14 through Columbus, and there were two bills introduced in the Senate by Harbison and Robertson that passed, and called Richard Smith, and the members of the delegation introduced the resolution, the House both passed, and so that's something that we were able to accomplish, and both, all members have supported the I-14 initiative. The next one is, the other one that we've talked about, spent a long amount of time on this, towing companies, remove derelict vehicles from private property. Again, we met a stone wall with the legislative council, they say that we cannot do that, the gratuitous clause, and they would not let us, they gave us an advisory letter, would not allow us to do that. That's something we've been very strongly about, you know, this private property and cars being left on private proctor, and then you cannot have it towed by the city, and that's just something that we, we just hit a stone wall, and, but I guess we can continue to talk about that. The next one is the Step Therapy Fail First Protocol issue. Finally, Counselor Barnes, and members of council, thank you, Counselor Barnes.
Thank all of y'all for working towards passing that decision.
Thank you. We finally got it, and this is something that I think is going to be helpful for the community, and Sharon Cooper, the members of the delegation, working very closely together, and that has passed, so that is a measure that we can take off our list. The next one is something that's sort of narrative, but you all asked us to deal with a congressional amendment to the FCC orders, something that's not in our purview, but at the same time, it's something that we did discuss. This is a local, kind of like a local home rule matter, and, but it require a general bill, and we were not able to do that. That is the opportunity to allow local elected officials to deal with the communication industry, and I think y'all are going to be talking about some of that today with sale towers and things of that nature. The next one is dealing with the statewide hotel tax exemption to cover persons displaced as a, because of a mandatory evacuation. Legislative council, in their opinion, think that this will produce unintended consequences, and so we were not able to introduce the bill in that respect, it would be a general bill as well. The second one, the next one is to nonpartisan ballot, we, that was highly debated in Atlanta, we've had a lot of election issues and ballot issues this legislative session, and our members in our delegation, we had a very vibrant conversation on that, and, but it was in the final opinion that the city has the authority to do as well now to have a nonpartisan ballot, if they would chose to do so. The next one is the five dollar hotel motel tax. That's an issue that dealt with the bill that we passed in 2015, there's no desire to do that, that would require a general bill, and that's part of a overall funding for the Department of Transportation, and that's part of the funding formula for House Bill 150 that passed, the Transportation Act of 2015, and, and there's, again, that seems to be working well, and no one is interested in doing that. The next one is the loss, is something that we've talked to, Pete Bowden about on several occasions, again, they tell us they can't make it retroactive, they can do something going forward, but there's no way for them to go back and to exempt the original exemption that would contain the 2004 legislation here in Columbus. The next one is dealing with a departmental issue, that's something that would be, have to be done by the General Procedure Act as it relates to a department, and it's just something that we cannot do to prompt notification of county, fire departments, et cetera. So, that is something that they tell us that we'd have to take a departmental policy or rule within the department. The next one is something that the delegation agrees to, agrees with rather, and that is how you all have to transport juveniles to and from facilities, and it's costly to the city, but we floated that idea as it relates to helping and relieving the city of this type of expenses, and that just didn't get any traction. But the delegation agrees that cities, Columbus, should not be required to transport and, without having the sufficient revenues and expenses to do so from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, based on the fact that they are housed here in Columbus City Jail. The next one is, has to do with the music industry, this is something that we met with Norm at the River Center. There is a, the only theater in the state of Georgia that was able to qualify for the tax exemption on music production was one, was the Fox Theater, and that was on Hamilton, because the threshold is so high, and, and members of the River Center wanted us to get that threshold lowered, because they had a couple productions, and we were trying to get it lowered to one hundred thousand, but the budget writers and, and when we took this proposal in to get it drafted, they told us that the revenues were down, and that they just didn't want to visit the tax incentive, but I promised the River Center, we promised the River Center, we'd look at it next year, hopefully with an uptick in our revenues, and when we were talking about this, the revenues in the state were down about four or five percent, and of course, our budget predicated on forecasting on revenues as it relates to our budget. So, it was, the flavor was not there, the temperature was not there for another incentive, which would have taken some funding, very minimal, but it would take some funding from the state budget. So, the tax credit is there, but it still has a five hundred thousand dollar threshold, which means therefore that any production you bring has to have half a million dollars in it, and of course, the only production that did that last year was Hamilton at the Fox Theater. So, that's something that we defer to next legislative session because of budget restraints. The last item was something that, again, requires internal, this is something that would require minimal staffing of two trained supervisors or managers between the hours of six PM and six AM for child caring and foster care and others, personal home facilities. That's something that they tell us that that would have to be, that's a mandate that would have to be done through the Procedure Act, and the Human Resource Agency policy would have to dictate that, that a general bill would be considered a mandate to authorize and mandate that, that we will be requiring minimal staffing for, within the department, and they would consider that a mandate, but this can be done through Administration Procedure Act of the department, is something that we'd have to talk to the department about, and ask them if they would consider that, and of course, it has budgetary considerations as well. So, that's, those are items that you all presented to us, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, city manager and city attorney, and I just want to say this, our delegation works very diligently together trying to come up with the issues and answers to the issue that you all bring before us, and we look forward to continue to work with you and the members, and I want to thank you all for coming, we want to thank you all for coming up for Columbus Day, and you, and the city manager, and Joe Umbretto, Brian Anderson from, and from the chamber, and I'm leaving out someone, but we want to thank all of y'all for coming up, and it was a great day, we had a great opportunity, and I want to thank all the sponsors that provided us with a great reception, and it was, it was a good agenda, an agenda where you all were able to meet with the leaders of the state, the governor, lieutenant governor, and the speaker, and also have dialogue with the chancellor and others there in Atlanta. So, again, I want to thank y'all, I know that Bill Dudley's here representing the chamber, and I'm going to thank him for his work and his effort in putting on Columbus Day, and we're looking forward to it, already we're looking at dates for next year, we're trying to have it in February, because the longer the session goes, the more, the logjam kind of comes into play. So, we're trying to back it up a little bit and have it in February, then that way, when you get into March, it's just a little bit more logistical problem with the calendar, but in February, the calendar is more predictable, so we hope to do it in February next year, early upon of February rather than March, so.
Well, Representative Smyrie, we thank all of you for what you do every day, and I got to tell you, with regards to Columbus Day, it was very impressive, at least to me, the amount of respect afforded Columbus because of you all, because of what you do and the way that you conduct your business and the, and the manner in which you approach, yes, serving the citizens here, but also serving the entire state of Georgia. The respect was evident, everywhere we went to go meet with somebody, we were ushered right in, and that doesn't just happen, that's based on the reputation that these individuals and the others that are not here today have established, so we thank you for what you do.
Thank you, and we apologize because of the session agenda that day, we were not able to join you all at any of those activities, because, again, when you get into March, that the schedule gets, it gets very, very tight, and, but we were able to make the reception, and it, well, we were late getting the reception even.
You had work to do, we understand that. Counselor Thomas?
Representative Smyrie, thank you so much for what you are doing for our community. One of the things, there are a couple of things that I wanted to mention, one of them is that a couple of meetings ago, I requested of the city manager that we may want to look at dividing up our legislative agenda presentation to the delegation. I know, for example, that some of these meetings that you're talking about, your guys are having to go to, have to deal with next year's budget, and you're in the process now of looking at those kinds of things. And so, I asked the city manager that if we are going to be looking at items for legislative agenda that impact the budget, we should be talking about those to you guys now, and not wait until that much closer to the session. There are other things that we probably could wait closer to the session to have a meeting with the delegation, so don't be surprised if we ask for another meeting. One of the things, quite frankly, that I'm going to ask to be put on this agenda is some funding for the National Infantry Museum. We need to do that, we need to take a look at that. One of the questions that I have for you, Mr., and I think I know the answer to this, but I want to make sure, several places in here, you've said that the legislative council has said he or she doesn't think that it's something we ought to be doing, and will not draft legislation. That pretty much, I'm assuming, puts an end to that issue, and is it, is it the legislative council's responsibility to draft legislation, or to say to you, you can draft it if you want to, but if it passes, I'm going to rule it unconstitutional, hold on, what it, tell me about that process a little bit.
You've got a counsel, Counselor Thomas, that's a great, great question, and I've been asked that many, many times, and the way it works, when we go to legislative council, and when my colleagues go to legislative council, they go in and talk about issue, and then the council gives them that advice. Now, you could still go ahead and introduce it, but if you got a lawyer, legal counsel saying it's not something that will meet the law, and then, then it's going to be kind of like the head of the cloud over you, you know, and you got a ballgame getting ready to start, and you're going to either have a rain delay, or the game is going to be postponed. So, that's kind of like how it goes, but now, a stronger is when they issue an opinion. Now, when they write an opinion, then you, you're up against the wall, you're not going to be able, the general assembly is not going to pass something that the lawyers tell us that is, will be ruled unconstitutional, or it's not something that we can do. So, it's a thin line there, and I agree with you, and on one, we almost started to do it, and that was the towing, you know, the towing matter, we felt so strong about it, but then we start talking, they went, oh, the lawyers say you can't do that, so that's what you're up against, is.
Blaming on the lawyers, let's just.
With the legal counsel, I wasn't a lawyer, the general, legal counsel, and, but we were very, very closely with them, and Clifton has called them and talked with them several times, especially on the towing aspect of it, and what do y'all think, I mean, about that question?
Well, I think.
Yeah, get it to the mic.
I think, good morning, first of all, I think Representative Smyrie has really answered the question in that, at the end of the day, we can have legislative council put on paper anything that we want, but getting it through the legislature, if we have the bill drafted, the legislative council's advisory opinion will still be there, and it's going to move with that piece of legislation. And so, that's why you see him saying that legislative council advised against it, because their advice is still going to move forward with that legislation, so when it gets to committee, then your chances of it moving forward are diminished, let's say.
Thank you so much.
And one side note is that we only had one letter written, the others were verbal, but they will accommodate you with a, with a letter, but, you know, if you ask for the letter written, but, I mean, it's six and one half and a half a dozen the other ones. And on the budget matter, I can tell you this, Representative Hughle serves on the continuation appropriation of, is it community health?
Health.
Health, of the appropriations committee, and that's the budget that the Mercer money, School of Medicine and the Morehouse School of Medicine money traveled through, we were able to get money for, and both of, of course, Mercer's going to have a campus here, but Morehouse is here as well, because they're doing a lot of residency at Piedmont and at St. Francis, so we got two medical schools that are active in this community, and I think it bodes well, enlightened of what we just got to talking about on the healthcare issue, so.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Representative, thank you for all you do for us, and just two point, two questions. One question is, when you begin to develop the itinerary or the agenda or the dates for the Columbus Day, would you mind looking at the day that's not Tuesday, that we would be able to attend?
You know, that, I'm glad you said that, because you know what today is? Today is a Tuesday, and we've got a, it's a Tuesday, yeah, we're going to change that. I just thought about that, because he told me Monday, and I said, no, Monday's not good. He said, what about Tuesday? Tuesday's good, now Tuesday's not good, Monday's a good. Tuesday is, is, is.
Unless you do it the third Tuesday.
Well, now, we're going to change it based on that, we're going, because if we're going, we can have it on a Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and I know the city council members are going to be there.
Yeah, if you could do it the third Tuesday, then that'd be great.
Okay.
Of course, now, I think we have, we don't have budget, we have budget meetings on Thursday.
But I would love the members of the council to get on the van and come up and see it and be with us, and, you know, it'd change your life.
Yeah, we'd love to do it. We'd love to do it.
He's saying make up the order Tuesday.
Well, I'll let y'all handle that.
We're going to stay with you.
Bill's very good at working things out like that, so, we appreciate all y'all do. The other thing is, the personal care homes, I wanted to ask if you could set up a I wanted to ask if you could set up a meeting with us and the Human Resources Agency to talk more about this. You, you mentioned in a couple of these items, mandates. Well, I think some of the councillors feel like we've been thrown up a mandate to deal with this, basically unfunded mandate to deal with this because we have 130.
Thirty-eight.
Hundred and thirty-eight homes that we were not even aware of in Columbus. And all of a sudden, we've got to deal with this through public safety, through city responses whenever there's an issue in that neighborhood. We don't even know that it's there, but we, we're responding to it. And we've had some of these homes that have had 25 calls from CPD in a year to that location. Now, I've visited one and it's in my district and, well, the owner lives in my district, but the house was not in my district. But I've visited one and walked through and, and I was impressed with the way his operation was. But we have some that are, are not as quality care provided for these young folks. And we're talking children and I, I know Counselor Davis has been directly involved in this, this issue. And it's, it's scary, the things that can happen to a child when someone turns their head. And all it takes is just the blink of an eye and it's just horrible for, God bless you. Horrible for things that, that, it, it's just scary that, that we have a society where we have to look after children the way we do today. I mean, when we were young, we rode bikes for miles and, and came back home when the streetlights came on, but you can't do that anymore. And it, it's just something I wish you would take back to Atlanta and help us be able to have a dialogue with, with the agency.
I, I agree with you 100%. And I, I think that, that city manager, we ought to do that, city attorney, Mr. Mayor. The personal homes, we need to look into that. And I think it needs to be elevated dialogue because you all have the responsibility, if from a, um, fiduciary position, he had the city council to handle that. And it's not fair for that to go on and you all have the responsibility. Same thing as the transport of the juvenile. That, that needs to be something that's looked at because it's not your responsibility, you know, from a, from a, from a responsibility standpoint, but then from a, from a financial fiduciary position, it puts the city in, in a position of having to pay for it. And, but I think this personal care home is, would be a wise, would be wise time spent by all of us. I think that's something that, because they, we, we're like you, they just jumping up everywhere.
Yeah. And that, one more, one more point about that is the children that are assigned to the homes, in some cases do not even live in Columbus. They're transported here from outside the, the city. So that's another concern we have.
Follow the dollar.
Yes, sir. So anyway, if you could help us with that, appreciate it.
I'm, I'm for that. And I'm, my delegation member, yeah, we've got more testimony.
Mister, Mister Counselor, I, we're back here agreeing with you because not only is it affecting the city, but it also affects the schools because these children are in and out of the schools. So I, I think it would be wise for us to have a meeting with the department, the city and the school district to talk about the adverse effect that we're experiencing and communities. We get calls from members of the community when these homes come because there's no prior notice necessarily that, of what it's going to be and, and how it's going to be managed. So I think it is timely and it's something that, that we should do and get all three parties though.
Good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Proton, to you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Glad to see y'all back, back home.
Good to be back. Y'all are better off when we at home.
This is city manager. When we talk about the possibility of moving the meeting Columbus Day in Atlanta on, on Tuesday, if they can't get it moved, we can change our council meetings. To, if, if, if it's on the second Tuesday, then we have plenty of time now to do it. We can change our council meeting to the third Tuesday.
And if they can't work it out, we'll, we'll, we'll work on it.
No, we're going to work it out.
Yeah.
Because it used to be so nice when everybody was up there at one time.
We're going to move it because we want the council members to come up. I think that we'll work, we'll work the date out on our end. We don't want y'all to change y'all's position.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Woodson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you all for being here and taking time from your busy schedule to speak to us and our constituents who are watching. I just wanted to ask if it's possible, when we talk about personal homes, can we kind of identify the, a little bit the difference? Because seniors have personal home cares too. And when you're discussing the personal home care, sometimes they get confused and, and worried. I do too, because of personal home cares are also known for senior assistant living like. So whenever we talk about personal home care, I know, and when we start, I say, wait, what are you talking about? The elderly? And it was actually the children. So somehow we have to identify the difference when we're talking the personal home care.
If we get the city council, who all your designees are, the State Department and the school system, I think it's going to educate all of us. And if we can get everybody in the same room, I think, I think you'll be able to, I think to elevate the discussion and I think it's going to be helpful to the delegation from an educational standpoint. And then we can be more effective on how we, what, correct the situation.
Well, and what, I guess my delivery of my message wasn't clear. What, what it is, is when you use the word personal home care to some constituents, some constituents and even to myself, it deals with adult, adult care. You know, like for instance, my mom, I displaced her in the personal home care. So it's, you know, and when we're talking about personal home care here, we're not talking about the seniors or adults, we're talking about the children home. And that's when I was saying, we kind of have to find a way when we're having that discussion to separate the two so that the constituents don't feel that we're going after the senior personal home cares, for them to understand that our biggest concern is the personal care that deals with children. Because in the area of children, there are a lot of, it's situations that are very interesting and very critical. That's what I was trying to say. We have to identify the difference between the children's personal home care and the adult personal.
I understand that, yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry I wasn't very clear.
No, this, this.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Barnes.
I'm glad maybe you made that distinction because a lot of people don't. But fortunately for the seniors and, and the, the delegation, COAGE had a number of things passed dealing with some of the concerns that were among the seniors in nursing care homes. As far as, because there were some of them that were not licensed and, and taking care of seniors and, and these, and I think the governor has authorized in funding for 17 more inspectors of homes. So that's, I'm glad you made that point because there is that they tend to lump everything under personal.
Personal care home, that is correct.
You know, so this dialogue is extremely good. Appreciate your involvement in us having a discussion because there are a lot of concerns, a lot of special needs children are placed in group, in, in.
I agree.
So I'm glad we're having this type of a dialogue so that we can ferret out all the information and then come up with areas of responsibility because we are infinite right now.
Right.
At this level to do anything, yet we have 138 that are here, whether they're licensed, whether they're following protocols, we can't control.
That's remarkable. I had no idea that was that number.
Right. And I, and that's why this dialogue is extremely important and getting together as a group and then running through the, the problems, who, who has authority, what we can do at, at the local level versus what the state can do.
Right.
That's the thing that we need to really ferret out and find out who has the authority to do what.
Well, thank you. And it starts with conversation and we appreciate your willingness to help facilitate that. In fact, as Counselor Davis has suggested, we will reach out to you and make that happen sooner rather than later. And thank y'all.
Well, I want to make close remarks. Yeah. Close statement.
Well, I was actually going to sit back there and just listen, but I just want to thank the delegation. I had an extremely surprisingly successful first session, but that goes because of the opportunities I had to serve with Representative Hugley, dealing with some voter rights issues, reaching out to our delegation leadership, Chairman Smirey and Chairman Smith, and having dialogue with the delegation that we're, we're seamless. We're, we're all after the same goals, especially here in Muskogee County. And so any success I had is, is because these individuals either told me yes or no. And, and to, to your question, Counselor Thomas, one of the things is of Legislative Council, not only are they in their office counseling our guests, but they're at the committee meetings sitting behind us. And when something's brought up that's not going to work, they're really quick to let us know, to, to put us out there. But I want to thank the city attorney, Clifton Fay, for reaching out to me on several issues related to Muskogee County that helped me with some votes and some other things we need to do and the mayor, when there were some, some local, some challenges to local authority, that I was able to give him a call and he responded promptly and, and we were able to thwart a few things that would have impacted the, the authority of this board. And so I do appreciate y'all for all your support and thank you for allowing me to serve you.
Thank you. You might be surprised that you're successful, we're not. That's why we sent you up there.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Thomas.
Before the delegation leaves, I can't let this opportunity pass without saying to Senator Robertson, congratulations. If you don't know, Senator Robertson and his wife welcomed into their family three weeks ago, a little girl named Andy. So if he looks a little tired and worn out this morning, that may be why. But she's a beautiful young baby and I know that you and Mrs. Robertson are so thrilled and we, we just wish you the very best.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, when we were here talking with all of the statistics and data, one of the things that I'm working on in the interim is with a group called Fair Count. And we're working to make sure that hard to count areas are, get counted in the census. And those areas that we were talking about represent hard to count areas. So we will be reaching out to the city. We'll be working all across the state, but between Columbus and Macon, we have a high concentration of hard to count areas. And if a citizen is not counted, that means $1,340 in federal funding does not come. So if you're under counted, that means you're going to be underfunded. And so that's why we think it's important to make sure that we do everything that we can to help with the census and make sure we don't have it undercount here because the census is going to be done in a large part online and that presents a new challenge for us as well. So we will be reaching out to the city officials to work with you all on that matter. So thank you all for the opportunity to serve and I just wanted to mention that since I had your attention.
Yes, ma'am. We're glad you're, we're glad you're involved because that's critical. We want to see us move the needle and get a much better and much more accurate count this year. So thank you for your involvement. Thank y'all. All right. And next up, this morning, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm just calling agendas.
And next I've got AT&amp;T Small Cells. Mr. Rich Johnson is here with us and he has with him Mike Mobley and Jeff Spencer. But we also have our planning director, Rick Jones, who, who is going to have an update and share some information with you as well. So with that, I'm going to call Director Rick Jones and he will bring up Mr. Rick, Rich Johnson.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We want to come this morning and, and give you an update on small cell legislation and what's being done in this, this community and throughout the state really about this issue. We want you to know that staff has been meeting with representatives from the industry to get a better feel, a better understanding about what they're trying to achieve and accomplish over the next several years really, in terms of dealing with small cells and the importance to them. This is something that we're going to have to deal with, no matter whether you like it or not, because this is really going, in the long run, is, is going to really help and benefit our citizens when it's all said and done in terms of cell service, providing data and things of that nature that they're going to be demanding anyway. So we, we need to make sure we, we have an understanding about that. One of the groups we did meet with last week was dealing with AT&amp;T. As the city manager has said, said to you, we have three representatives here today. I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson and Mr. Mr. Spencer and Mr. Mobley, they'll come forward now and make a presentation to you of what they're trying to achieve in the community as representatives of AT&amp;T. And when they are done, I am going to follow up with, give you an update in terms of the recent legislation that was passed by our, by the, our representatives as well in dealing with this matter directly and head on. So, Mr. Johnson, if y'all want to come?
Appreciate it. Good morning. Good to see you. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council. I appreciate you all having us here today. It's, it's been a great conversation this morning. I'm trying to bring the bar back down a little bit from the previous two presentations, but hopefully what we can do here today is just kind of go through these slides, go through kind of where we are in terms of the deployment of small cells in the city of Columbus and how we got here, why they're needed and what they, what they look like. And I really want to, you know, just kind of make.
I'm sorry. Clear.
Thank you. I really just want to, you know, have a couple of slides, want to go through here and ensure that, you know, we have, we have a conversation. You guys can ask questions and we move along because there's been a lot of discussion on this topic. There's been a lot of things that folks think may be true or maybe not true, but hopefully what we can do today is, is dispel any myths that may be out there and then walk through, as, as Rick mentioned, kind of what, what the next steps are. So with that, what I want to start off, is, is talking about why we need small cells and how customers and consumers are really changing the way that they communicate with, with folks. So what we are seeing today is that we live in a world where households in 2016, this is off 2016, over 50% only have a wireless phone. They have no landline. They do not have your traditional telephone in the house like they used to. And in fact, given it's now 2019, you know, that, that number continues to grow and continues to, you know, impact what, how people communicate and how they use the, the network that we have that operates right now, the cellular network. They are not using, consumers are not using as, as much as they used to your traditional landline phone. But this growth is, is continuing to happen and it's continuing to change what we have to do in terms of responding and it's continuing to impact where we have to make our investments to ensure that, that folks can communicate and can interact with each other. I mean, I think we sit here and, and most of us have, you know, at least one cell phone, maybe a tablet, maybe two cell phones. Those numbers just continue to rise, especially as we move into an age, and we'll talk about it here in a little bit, of Internet of Things where your watch connects the, you know, to the cellular network, your microwave does. I mean, you start to name everything under the sign that can connect to the wireless network. That drives demand, that drives what we see in terms of, in terms of our network and the infrastructure needed to support that. So since 2007, we have seen a 360,000% increase of data on our network. 360,000%. And if you could think back to 2007, that is the advent launch of the iPhone. And that, that curve continues to go up, continues to get steeper, continues to climb. And all that we have to do to, to maintain it is continue to invest and continue to build a, a network that can support this traffic, it can support consumers' needs to communicate with the outside world, to do their jobs, to FaceTime their grandkids, you name it. The network continues to have to be invested in and expanded upon. So what you've probably been used to in the past are macro towers, cell towers, the larger cell towers that are, are around, you know, any community in the past. That is traditionally how folks have connected to the network through a cellular phone. But as the network needs are changing and as the demand and capacity are, you know, continue to increase, we have to find ways to alleviate that. And so what we have been doing and others in the industry as well, is working to deploy what we call small cells. And small cells, what they are is essentially a cell antenna that was more or less once on a cell tower and bringing it closer to the end user. on a cell tower and bringing it closer to the end user. And we call this the densification of the network. And why this is needed is because you basically have, excuse me, you basically have only so many people that can connect to a cell tower at any one time. And given the amount of data and given the amount of video and given the amount of traffic that's on there, you get to a world where it's like trying to drain a pool out of a garden hose. It just eventually isn't going to work. And so, you've probably had the experience where you have, you look at your phone, you have five bars and you can't get on the internet and you can't make a call and you're sitting there thinking, but I have a signal, I have five bars, what's going on? What is happening is there are so many people on the network that it becomes congested. And you basically get to a world where you can't fit any more, any more traffic on the network and so, everything starts to slow down. And so, through building small cells, we actually bring the network closer to the end user to alleviate that and essentially add a whole bunch more garden hose to that pool so that you can, you know, funnel all the water out of it if you needed to. But by doing that, we're able to deploy these next-generation technologies, 5G. I know a lot of folks have certainly heard that term before, but 5G is the next generation of speeds. And so, I don't know if, you know, how familiar everybody is with technology. You may remember 3G on your phone and then 4G and then LTE. Well, next is 5G. And what 5G really is, is a completely and brand-new network. It uses a different spectrum. It uses a different radio frequency. And what it will allow for is incredibly fast speeds and incredibly low latency of the network. So we begin to talk about, right now, your phone, I don't want to get too technical here, might have 50 megs on LTE. When you get to the 5G network, you're starting to talk about multiple gigs over the air. And just for reference, 1,000 megs makes one gig. We're talking about multiple gigs over the air. And that is transformative in terms of what it can do for a community, in terms of how people can communicate, in terms of what economic development opportunities are out there. You can begin to run entire enterprises off of the cellular network. And in fact, here in Columbus, just like we have around the state, we've built fiber to the home. That's one gig. 5G offers multiple gigs over the air without a wire between you and the device. So certainly, it is a lot of opportunities for, you know, innovation, a lot of opportunities for economic growth and, you know, change. But with that comes the need to deploy these. And so, it's like building, it is building a brand-new network. And that is why we have to bring these closer to the end user. The frequency only goes roughly 250 to 750 feet versus a cell tower where you can get, you know, multiple miles. It just only transmits so far and that's just science at the end of the day. It's a more higher frequency, kind of like a microwave. It only will go so far before you end up, you know, it doesn't really work or doesn't have the speeds and the impact that you'd want it to. We just talked about speeds, so I'll skip through this, but you can see kind of where we've come through and kind of where we're going to in terms of 5G and what's out there. This is a continual investment that we're making, that others are making, to give our consumers, to give the communities that we serve, the latest and greatest in terms of technology, in terms of connectivity. So, I get a lot of questions. All right. What do these things look like? Because we've heard everything from refrigerators to, you know, you name it, I've heard what it looks like. And so, what I want to show is some actual real small cells that have been deployed, that are up on poles so that you can see them live and see what they look like. But for, just to kind of level set, these antennas generally go on a utility pole located in the right-of-way. There are a bunch of different designs. There are a bunch of different ways to make them look and fit within what is already existing within a community. And as Rick's going to go through here a little bit later, there are a lot of ways that, you know, historical or, you know, certain areas that are zoned different ways, you can fit poles that look just like what is already there or so close that, you know, most folks would not really recognize the difference. So, the first here is, and this was one we actually chatted about the other week, putting them on a street lamp, a street light. You see on the, I guess that's my left, this is a street light that doesn't have an antenna on it. And on my right, you see a street light that does have an antenna on it. They've actually made some now that are even, you know, smaller and more in line with the pole size, so it's not as much of, you know, noticing that antenna on top there. But for argument's sake, you see what it looks like at the end of the day when it's on a street, you know, street light there. There are other options that are out. You can see, we just had our legislative delegation here down at the Capitol. There are multiple of these around town. But they come in, you know, a variety of shapes and forms, but at the end of the day, it's an antenna that's located at or near the top of a pole with a radio that is, you know, let's just say roughly halfway down the pole to allow for the signal to transmit. You'll see, we put them next to some, you know, Georgia Power transformers just for kind of reference sake. They are, you know, much smaller than the transformer that is, you know, that are on poles currently. And in the top-left corner, that is an example of a more stealth-like design where it literally just kind of looks like, I describe it as a softball bat, where the top end of the pole kind of just gets a little bit wider at the top. But I know certainly Columbus, as do many communities, have, you know, down on Broadway, a number of decorative poles. And we want to make sure that what we are building meets the needs of the community and is reflective of what is already there. You know, if you've got a whole bunch of already wooden poles, let's put a wooden pole. That makes the most sense. If you've got a bunch of street lamps that are decorative, let's find one that fits, that meets within what's already within the community. And so, these are literally just kind of some, they came out of the brochure that these companies that make these, they send brochures now on these things, there's so many designs. Some options out there to show you, there are things other than just a wooden pole with an antenna on it. There are things that meet and can look like what is already in and around the area so that you frankly don't see them nearly as much as you would if it was, you know, a giant wooden pole in the middle of the right-of-way next to, you know, some nice decorative street lamps. These are some options. I know that Jeff is looking at this one on my far right as a possibility here. But what we want to do and what part of the reason for coming here and having this conversation is really about working with the planning department, working with Public Works to figure out what fits where and what is the most appropriate in the most, you know, in each spot. And so, Columbus, as you all well know, has an ordinance on the books. That ordinance will continue to be in effect until at least October 1st, when this state legislation bill will become effective. But we want to then and now continue to work with the city to figure out what works, what your concerns are, and ensure that we're doing it the right way. Jeff and Mike here are the same guys that have been applying for permits with the city for a number of years on wire lines, stuff. They've worked with the city for years. So these are the same folks that you guys have and staff has worked with for many, many years. And we want to, at the end of the day, make sure that we're building something and deploying something that gives Columbus an edge in terms of next-generation wireless technology, but at the very same time is reflective of your community and reflective of what's going on and we're not coming in with just a, you know, one-size-fits-all kind of approach.
Rich, thank you. Counselor House had a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So does, and this may actually roll over into Rick Jones. Does each provider have to have their own pole?
So, great question. The answer is no and yes, all at the same time. The option to co-locate where you have multiple providers on a pole does exist. But what I think is one of the myths out there is that AT&amp;T and Verizon and Sprint, T-Mobile, all have to be in the same spots on every single location. And every network is different, just like there are different providers on different cell towers now today. We're not, you know, we don't all have to go into the exact same spot. So what you'll find is that where AT&amp;T may need to go, especially when you get to a world with 5G where you're talking, moving it a little bit makes a big impact, might not be where Verizon needs to go and vice versa. So, in the scenario where it is the same place, yes, that is an option. But frankly, I don't know that it's going to happen, at least not in the early onset, a ton where we both have to be in the exact same spot. So you might find one is on one light post and one's catty corner or two blocks down and they're on that post over there.
Maybe I should say the rest of my questions for Rick when he gets up.
Okay.
Because it's kind of city-wide anyway. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Woodson?
Yes, thank you. Rich?
Yes.
Richard Johnson. Thank you very much for coming. I appreciate the presentation. I have a little concern and I want to see if you're not able to address it today, if you can come back. The pictures that you showed are showing like in the historic district of Tom, these areas like that. Not too long ago, several months ago, I had a problem in my district and constituents where a tower was placed. You know, there was, I guess it's a tower, they used a utility pole. But it was done where it wasn't appealing to the community or the family member that's on their, front of their home on the city property. And matter of fact, the, I guess the electronic portion of it was all done where a child can run up, play with the box, pull the strings, you know. And it was awful. And I drove our engineering crazy, our constituent called them all the time and we lost that battle, you know, with the company that was doing it. And that left a bad feeling for me. So while I do enjoy your presentation, I want to know what you're going to do in the neighborhood where they don't have these fancy poles, they have the utility poles. There are communities that are, we're trying to provide a better quality of life, communities that have been stressed for so long and we're trying to bring something positive, when it is a need. I have mine. My son-in-law upgrades me without my permission every time an upgrade comes. But it's not fair, you know, to your everyday community who's trying to do something and you come right in front of their house and put on this pole all this technology that they have to deal with. How are you dressing?
No, that is a great question and you're not the first one to reference that.
Sorry.
No, I mean, it's, you know, frankly, it's, I know who you're talking about and they've caused a lot of work for us on our end because that's not, one, how we do business and I recognize this is, you know, my first time, you know, down here. But for us, first and foremost, we're going to want to go on to an existing pole as priority one. Outside of any policy or legislation ordinance, it just makes more walking-around business sense to go on a pole that's already there. It's easier, it's quicker, it's there, put it up on it and you call it, you call it a day. But what we will do is our pole, their design, first of all, is they had a bunch of, you know, 100-plus tower, you know, poles that they needed. It's a totally, ours is a totally different network. We use fiber backhaul one. They're using microwave to beam from one to the other, which is why they had to have all these, you know, extremely tall poles. Ours is a fiber backhaul, so it's the same fiber that exists, you know, is on poles today from AT&amp;T's network that exists today. So that is part of why ours are not going to be that tall. The highest, you know, frankly, that I have seen that we've ever had need was 50 feet. Most utility poles are 40 feet. So, you know, you get to a world where it fits in with what is around there based on the network need. And then, two, you know, our guys are here, you know, regularly. And so, when those things come up, you know, you call Jeff, you call Mike and they're, you know, they're submitting a permit on just some other thing at the same time. And so, it doesn't help our business to go and do these onesie-twosies that don't meet the standards that you guys have because quite frankly, just it ripples through everything else that we do with the city, everything else that we have going on here. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense for us and so, that's why we want to, you know, frankly, come and meet with you guys and then also come and have these meetings with Public Works and Planning so that, you know, we're going through, we're doing it, you know, concealing wires, our radio, we don't want the kids touching it. Like it's higher than you or I or, you know, any NBA basketball player is jumping to get it. So, and that's on purpose because you don't want them to do that. It's just frankly, it's somebody's got to, it's a liability, it's a hazard. And then, at a bare minimum, somebody's got to come back out and fix it. That's another, you know, none of those things are things that we want. So, our radio is much higher than, like I said, than you guys can reach or anybody can reach.
You know, and I'm going to ask Donna to show you, she has the pictures. I want her to show you later so you can see the nightmare that we in our community feel when we hear another tower. And maybe you can help be one of the advocates to share or show good community neighbor
Absolutely.
With the presentation and work that you do. So Donna, your instructions is to show him what I don't like and my constituent don't like.
And that's not what we want.
And I think, I think once you see the pictures she's going to show you, if you put yourself in their shoes, in your home, and you come out of your home, you took pride in it, you would understand exactly what I'm saying. And I don't know, but all the, I think everybody in technology needs to see that picture and understand. Would you like this in front of your home? That was my only thing. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor House.
Thank you again. I was going to be quiet, but when you mentioned 50-foot pole, I had to say something. There are a number of neighborhoods around Columbus that have underground utilities. They don't have 40-foot poles. They're about 20 feet, you know, something like that. And they're decorative because of the community that they're in. So I would just caution you about the idea of putting 50-foot poles in the ground all around Columbus because that's going to cause extreme excitement.
Those are the exception to the rule. Like I said, most, vast, vast majority are what already, you know, exists today and going on on what exists today. So, and just for clarity's sake, the, I think you may be sharing with you guys where the kind of initial thoughts are in terms of our deployment. There might be one, Jeff, you can maybe speak to it. It's not like in a subdivision, that kind of stuff. These are on main thoroughfares and roads that exist today.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you for your presentation. Will each company be labeling these towers, you know, so that we know who to contact if they're in a situation where they're not...
Yeah, so I, without a 100% certainty, I know in the past where we have, cities have asked, put a label and a phone number, just like they do on, you know, a utility box or something like that, can be put on the radio so that you can see, you know, AT&amp;T and then a phone number to call.
We would like that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to give AT&amp;T credit. They got in front of this, asked to come to us. They want to share with what their plans, with us, what their plans are, where they're planning on going and how they plan on addressing them. So I think some of our challenges that we're facing within these neighborhoods are with other companies that we will try to bring in here to talk to us so that we can express to them some of the same concerns. But I do want to thank Rich and Mike and Jeff. They sat down with us and kind of walked us through the process and I think the likelihood that they will be placing obtrusive towers is minimal. They do want to complete their coverage and make sure that they're able to provide services to their customers. But they've been very, very forthcoming and very willing to try to work with Rick and Donna's area and make sure that it's done right. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Counselor Woodson has another question?
Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but can I make a request?
Sure.
That when you complete your planning on where these are going to go, if you can send it to us so that way if our constituents call us or something happens, we're aware of where the tower is, what it's going to look like and we'll be able to let them know and explain it a little bit better.
Yes, ma'am.
Please. Thank you. You can tell them a worry word about it.
No, and rightfully so. So, like I said, we would rather be in front of it, ahead of it and you know what's coming, you know what's going on. And then if there are things that we need to tweak, you know, sometimes it is, you know, what you want doesn't exist, but let's at least talk about it or see if we can work towards a solution. And that's what we're here to do. I think, you know, frankly, at least I hope that a vast, vast majority of these will go up and, you know, you'll hear nothing about and, you know, life will be great.
Thank you.
All right. Doesn't seem to be any further questions.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have Planning Director Rick Jones to come to the podium.
I want to present some information to you that I think you're going to find pertinent to this conversation. Quick history, though. You may recall back in about 2016, we had these issues about cell towers, small cell towers, showing up in the right-of-way or at least wanting to go in the right-of-way. The initial conversation we had with one, we had one that was wanting to go at least 100 feet... The initial conversation we had with one, we had one that was wanting to go at least 100 feet down here on front. And we were called, kind of caught flat-footed. By December of 2016, we had an order, thanks to this council, we had an order to put in place that helped us govern where these, where these small cells could go, what they might look like, and things of that nature. Before I get into the meat of my, of my presentation, I want Director Newman to come in and share with the map of where these cell towers are, these small cells are now, and what we're looking at from that standpoint.
Yes, ma'am. Just, just looking at the map, of course, this is very generic. And we can send you a link that's more detailed, so that you could look at each specific location and know the address. And you'll see that we have what's already in place, what's been completed, which is what you're referring to on, on some of your comments on the previous provider. And then the requests that we have now currently for construction. And we are negotiating with each provider at every location. We're looking at it hard to make sure that it fits in with the neighborhood, to try to resolve some of the complaints that we've had before. But again, this just kind of gives you a general idea of where, and they're proposing to put theirs. And you can see the difference, as he referred to earlier, where they can't always locate because they don't need towers in the same location as the previous provider did. Any questions on the map?
Yes, Councilor House has a question?
My, my major concern is that we don't wind up with multiple poles in somebody's yard because every cell provider happens to decide they all need a pole there. Because that's going to really excite a lot of people, as you can understand, you probably wouldn't want two or three poles in your front yard. And so somehow we have to watch that, and if we're going to have an issue like that, it'd be good to have some kind of warning. And we need to let the public know, because, you know, as you know, there was a great consternation the last time this came up, because suddenly a pole showed up in the right-of-way, but in somebody's basically front yard from their viewing, from their front door. So appreciate any kind of warning you can give all this, and any help you can, you know, give us and the rest of the city on monitoring where these poles go.
We, we've had a couple of meetings, as the mayor referred to, the one with AT&amp;T, but we also had a meeting with another provider, and that's one of the things that we stress with them, was the need to make notifications to the neighborhood, so that they know they're coming, contact information. The map will help us with knowing that there is a existing pole there, so that we look at it a little harder as where they place any new poles. So those are the kind of things that we talked about and discussed in our meeting with AT&amp;T, and we will continue to discuss with other providers as they come forward.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Woodson?
Thank you. Thank you, Donna. I appreciate it. I'll try not to call you at all hours. Have a question for you. On here I see where it says propose, and they seem to be so close. Do they have to be that close to one another, the towers, or how does it work?
It's just the scale of the map. They're really not that close. It's just because we were trying to show the whole county, if you will.
Do you know about the distance between?
It probably varies based on the demand and the signal strength and the existing infrastructure in place.
Okay. All right then. Thank you.
Okay. Doesn't appear to be any more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Rick?
So with that in mind, now you have an understanding at least about where we are right now in dealing with this. I'm going to say, I'm going to say this, you probably never hear me say it again. Anytime that legislation is proposed at the state, I think we all kind of cringe a little bit, because we're just not really sure what it's going to look like when we get back. And we monitored this one in terms of dealing with this thing called Streamlining Wireless Facilities and Antennas Act. And there was a lot of apprehension on my part, because I know what we're dealing with here locally, if you can hear in terms of what Councilor House is asking, and Councilor Woodson as well. We know, we all know what we're going to get involved with. But I got to tell you this about, about this legislation. This is probably one of the best pieces of legislation I've seen come out of our legislature in a long time. And I'm going to try to tell you why here real quick, and hit some of the high spots here and here. The purpose of the legislation is pretty straightforward. It was basically to streamline the deployment of wireless broadband in public right-of-ways. From what I can gather and in my research and talking with others about it, if you are a carrier like AT&amp;T or Verizon or whoever, when you go into a community, they may have a different set of standards than what another community may have, and that's got to be confusing. It really has to be in terms of what they're looking at, and it's got to be, can't be very cost-effective for them as well in terms of doing this. What this piece of legislation does is does exactly what the name implies. It streamlines and sets a standard that we all can live with in this state, going forward from this state forward. It breaks us up first off in terms of basically three different, three different kind of class authorities here, one, two, and three. We are two because of the amount of real property, partial to real property you have in the community itself. If we have more than 100,000, we go to a Class One. Of course, if we had less than 10,000, we go down to Class Three. Doesn't mean a whole lot to anybody, really, but just kind of sets some parameters here. It really requires, as a Class Two, that a provider and us sit down at least 30 days prior to talk about the applications and so forth, when they bring them to us. So there's no surprises when they walk in, or when they walk in, we tell them, tell them a story, and they don't understand it. Or they bring us something we don't understand what's going on with their application. It requires us to at least sit down and talk about it. The main thing I took away from this section of the legislation is it requires us to keep that information confidential. They're not going to come in here and share trade secrets with us, and the inspectors that go blab them or whatever, or expect it to be public record. This, this legislation protects that. And I've got to say this, one thing, other thing. While it protects us in terms of our interest, in terms of dealing with the right-of-way and so forth in the community, I believe it also protects the interests of the industry as well, in terms of allowing them to go forward and providing the service that we need in this community and throughout the state itself. So I think it's a win-win situation, and that's why I think the legislation is so good for Columbus in this, in part. It establishes uniform fees for everybody. So again, if you're, if you're coming to Columbus, you know what that fee is going to be for something. If you're going to Savannah, it's going to be the same fee, or Augusta, or, I don't know, Richland, wherever you want to go, this is, the fee's going to be that. You can see here, I'm not going to read all of them to you, though, is, basically, though, if you go to do a co-location, it's a $100 fee for that. If you got to, if you're going to co-locate on an existing replacement pole and so forth, there's an annual fee of $100 for that, $200 for a new pole, and so forth. This is important. Again, if you're, if you're a business, you need to know what's going to cost you to do business in that community. And this establishes that fact. I believe that these are fees we can live with and make this work from that standpoint. There's a $40 per year for co-laying on city poles. There's an actual increase in here that will take place in January of 2021, about 2.5% increase from that. So that's, that's important. It's been, it's been something of an inflation factor built in here that we realize we're going to capture. All of this is all well and good until you get to the point of saying, understanding that there is proposed regulations coming out of the Federal Communication Commission that basically does none of this in terms of what we're trying to achieve here as a state and as a local government. The FCC order right now is it would actually ban local regulations designed to prohibit wireless infrastructure deployment, which means that if we have, if we've established some standards for where we're going to put these things in the right-of-way, this FCC basically would say, no, can't do that. That wouldn't happen. It would standardize the fee structure if cities can charge, something that we're showing here with the fees today. It would establish a 60-day shot clock, shot clock meaning we have 60 days to basically respond. I don't have to have a problem with that so much, because I think that's something we can hit and do, do very well from that standpoint. And it would set some modest guardrails for, on other municipality rules that may prohibit service. Keep in mind, our objective here as staff, as administrators and so forth, is not to prohibit the, the use of these small cell towers in this community. It is to regulate them, though, and make sure they conform to the needs of our community and of our citizens, and what we're trying to achieve here. But knowing that these FCC rules are out there, there is some litigation against them, they're going through court. What fascinates me about this piece of legislation, this is already built in. They realize if this gets overturned, there's language in here that takes care of that now. If it doesn't get overturned, there's still language in here that takes care of this. So we're not going to have to go back to, to the well again and say, we've got to rethink this whole process. This has been very well thought out, in my opinion, about what we're trying to achieve. Of course, they have to fill out an application for us, which means they have to have it prior to construction. The application will be available to the public, just like any other public documentation from that. They got to provide detailed construction drawings. The city cannot enter into any, any really exclusive contract. These are all the high points of this particular section dealing with applications. There are other, other factors in there, like, as I said, names and carriers and all this stuff. But these are the high points from that. Within 20 days after we receive the application itself, the legislation requires that we have to notify the applicant in writing of any construction or improvements that are going to happen on that particular right-of-way within the next 24 months. It doesn't do us any good to tell somebody that they can go out there and put a, a small cell out there on the right-of-way, and then we have to turn around and come back and say, oh, by the way, we're widening this road for you. That's not going to happen. We have to make sure we keep the lines of communication open from that standpoint. We have to let them also know that there may be some potential ground for denial. There's no sense in trying to hide that fact and try to say, well, you know, we don't know anything about this, and by the way, we're going to deny it anyway. That's, make sure we have to be straight up with that. We have to let them also know in that 20 days that if the application is complete or incomplete. Again, just common, really common courtesy more than anything else when it's all said and done. We have 30 days actually to approve or deny the application itself. Denials have got to be in writing, back to the applicant. And if the applicant, the applicant may file a notice if the city fails to act in any way. If we just sit on the application, don't do anything, they can still file with us and that and request another 20 days in terms of getting that response back to us, a written decision back to us, back to them, rather, in 20 days. All right, this is placement. On this, on this legislation here, a pole or tower, whatever you want to call the thing, a structure cannot exceed 50 feet in a residential and/or historic district area itself. It may sound a little excessive in some regards, but trust me, in sitting in a lot of these conversations on things in the past, on this nature, this is a good compromise for 50 feet. It says it may go up to 50 feet. It doesn't say it has to be 50 feet, but it can go up to 50 feet from that. There's also some provisions you'll see in the, in the fact sheet we handed out about commercial industrial areas that where you can go another 10 feet, basically based on, on the topography from ground level and so forth involved with that. The other important section, the thing that comes out of this placement is it requires the applicant to consider the utilities that are already buried there now. In other words, you got to maintain that appearance dealing with our neighborhoods. That's, that's a strong point, because a lot of these neighborhoods now, majority of these neighborhoods now are being built with underground utilities. We don't, we don't expect them to come in and put overhead wires for this thing, or do anything that's going to take away that appearance from the neighborhood. It requires them to consider that, and we will consider that as well, as part of the whole deal. We can disapprove a wireless application for any number of reasons on here. Basically, things like traffic control equipment, if it fails to meet ADA requirements, things of that nature. We can, we can reject it on straight up, in looking at from that. It gives us that kind of flexibility, that kind of authority, if you want to say it, to make sure we maintain the quality we're looking for in our community. The last one here talks about interferes with a public, public work, public roadway project that has been advertised and bid and scheduled for completion within six months of that application. We have projects that are ongoing now that, if they may interfere in terms of where the construction is going, how the widening of the curb and gutter being placed, whatever the case may be, we can deny it if it's going to interfere with that kind of project, which I think is a good thing from that standpoint. If they get an application approved, they got to start on that and let installation and construction of that small cell in six months. If something comes up, tornado comes through the area, or whatever the case may be, that interferes with them actually constructing it, they can and may request another six months in terms of getting that, that work done. That certainly is doable and is applicable, is thing. Here's an important thing to us. I'm going to read this to you so you understand it. Should a roadway be improved, widened, et cetera, whatever, the wireless provider shall move the installed equipment at no cost to the city. That is huge, because I can tell you now, in dealing with road projects we deal with on a day-to-day basis, our costs shoot through the roof every time we deal with a utility in terms of, like, dealing with Georgia Power or even AT&amp;T or somebody else, that we have to actually move that, move or require them to move those utilities that comes back on us. That is a huge cost to us. If they, if they fail to do that, in other words, we notify them and say, we're getting ready to move this equipment, you need to move it for the project, whatever. We can go out there and actually cut the power and move the equipment if the wireless, if the wireless provider fails to respond in a timely fashion. Never, I never had heard that, where you can actually go out there and cut a utility and tell them that, I'm sorry, we got to get this road project completed. Normally, we haven't, we're having to scrounge around and fight and deal with that. Again, that's, to me, my terminology here, that's huge in what we have to deal with on that. If the equipment has been abandoned, we deem to be abandoned for more than 12 months, we can remove it with a 90-day notice. If it's determined it's going, it's a threat to public safety, we can also remove it, which is, again, monumental in my mind from that standpoint. The city may require the wireless provider to repair all damage to our right-of-way directly involved with the installation. In other words, we've, and we've had contractors come in, not AT&amp;T. We've had contractors come in, though, and basically tear up a right-of-way big time. Leave ruts, grass not put back, whatever the case may be. This requires them to go back and be, repair that damage for us at their cost in doing that. We can propose additional locations within 100 feet of poles in residentially zoned areas. So in other words, if it's, if they can't go there, or there's a pole there, we can say, you need to look another 100 feet somewhere else and do that.
Rick, excuse me, just a second. Yeah, Councilor Crabbe?
Rick, as you're going over this, something came to my mind. I've worked with several builders in the development of subdivisions, and we always had a problem that the cable would not lay their cables until we were 50% built out, and it, it kind of created issues. I'm wondering if maybe we could work something out that these, these small cell towers could be built into these subdivisions as part of the aesthetics of the subdivision, and we could maybe possibly market these subdivisions as smart, smart subdivisions, if that could kind of work within our planning.
I, Councilor Crabbe, I think that's a possibility in doing that. The, the companies are going to tell you primarily, they're locating those things, though, to provide the service based on the home need more than anything else, not just for the neighborhood. But I think, I think you hit a pertinent point here about the fact that when utilities do go back, go in, like you say, they'll get everything all laid out in the subdivision. All of a sudden, utilities are coming back in, it could be a cable company, for instance.
Mm-hmm.
And all of a sudden, they're tearing at the front yard, they're tearing at the street or whatever. And we've got to make sure we have that kind of coordination. I think that we can look at, look at doing that and reaching out and letting folks know about that. I think it's just something we need to, need to include as well when we talk about this.
I think the builders would, would really love that, and I think that the buyers would like that, too, because it, they can't get cable for, you know, some of the first ones into the neighborhood, they can't get these services, and so I think that could be a win-win for everybody.
Okay. We'll sort of keep that in mind. If you, if a company comes in and does a single consolidated application, meaning they have more than two proposals, they cannot be submitted more than two miles in diameter, anything beyond that, we can't, we have to look at a different application. We can't require the wireless provider, for instance, though, to identify or hold the city harmless in any way on this. Apparently, it may have been a problem in other communities, I just don't know, but that seems to be that. And in any agreements we have in place today, in other words, applications that have been, have been approved and started and so forth, they're going to, they're going to remain into effect even, even after this, this state legislation goes into effect on October 1st of 2019. All of that. The, one thing that, the last thing I want to say about this, I guess, is, like I said, this is a very, this is a very good piece of legislation as far as I'm concerned, in terms of covering all the bases and everything we're looking at. Does it answer every question? No, and there, and there it will. What our objective, though, is now, though, is we understand that this does go into effect on October 1st of this year. What we need to go back and do is, is kind of meld us back to the existing ordinance we have today and take the good things that we should have in our local ordinance that we have today and take the good things that we used to have in our local ordinance that may not be addressed in this and combine them and bring it back to you, put that ordinance into, into effect and to play here so we can monitor and control what we're trying to, trying to achieve here dealing with these small cells. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, I'll conclude my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any counsel? Apparently not.
Mr. Mayor, with that, thank you, Ms. Jones. I am going to call up the Development Authority, Mr. Russ Carrick, Chairman of the Development Authority, and he has with him.
Thank you, Glenn.
I'll let him introduce any guests that he might have.
Brian Salido's with me, he might have departed, I'm not sure.
Mr. Carrick, thank you for your patience. I appreciate y'all sitting there waiting.
Hey, and I promise I'll be quick, not because of the hour of the day, but I had planned on being fairly quick anyway, so. But I wanted to update you, I think the last time we came was fall sometime, and so I wanted to recap maybe a little bit of 18 first and what we did in the way of announcements. We had four projects we announced last year, Gildan Yarns Expansion was 80 jobs, INCOM announced 55 job expansion. The big one we had last year was the Global Call Center Solutions, 600 jobs. Y'all remember that is in the process of building a new facility or rehabbing an old facility into a new facility. And then we also worked on the VA Clinic that brought 200 jobs. So that was the, sort of the wrap of the bigger projects we announced last year. In regards to the Global Call Center, y'all remember back in September, we announced they were coming out of Colorado, I believe, 600 new jobs to be located in the Windixie on Bunnivista Road. They've been working on that facility for quite a while now and they're about a month and a half, two months away from moving into that. And so when they do move, you'll certainly get an invitation to, to the ribbon cutting out there. They currently have hired, if y'all remember, we worked with Bradley Company on the Rothschild Building down on 11th and 6th to get them a, a temporary lease so they could go ahead and start building out there, operation. They've had 150 people employed down there, that was kind of the max they could fit into that facility on, on what they put in there, but they've been operating in there, they're very pleased about what they found with the workforce. So all things are still a go and, and, and we hope to maybe even get, and I know the governor met the owner of Global Call Center Solutions at a recent Economic Development State event, and so we may be getting him down here when they do the ribbon cutting. We're also waiting on him. We had the ribbon cutting at Pratt &amp; Whitney, if y'all remember, scheduled when the tornadoes hit. We've rescheduled, we are in the, trying to get that rescheduled, trying to get the governor's schedule to fit up with that. But just to give you a little bit of idea, if y'all remember, when we did that incentive, they were spending $450 million out on their campus. This was in 2017 when they, when they announced that project. They've done that, they agreed to hire 500 people, they've done that. I think they've actually hired a few more and spent a few more million dollars on top of that, but that's been a very successful project and they're, they're blowing and going. If y'all hadn't had a chance to go out there and see the new facility, certainly plan to do that when they have the ribbon cutting again. We also, speaking of maybe getting the governor down here, the Mercer Medical thing, y'all, we haven't done the formal, formal announcements, but it did become public and intentionally so. We did some interviews, I guess, when President Underwood was here. But that deal has finally, I think we've jumped over all the hurdles, other than getting them moved and set up. To give you an idea of the schedule, as soon as we get Global Call Center Solutions out of that building in the next month and a half, we should have sort of all the administrative issues worked out with Mercer on how we're going to go about the reconstruction and the new construction that'll be added to that facility. But they will be working on that, they'll start this summer. By this time next summer or by June of, July timeframe of 2020, they will begin bringing in their staff and professors that actually set up temporary labs, and we think they're going to do that in that parking lot behind United Way. But to go ahead and get the research started, they've got to have those people on staff and operating for about a year so that their accreditation process can happen. And then they'll bring in students in the fall of 2021. So we're excited about that, obviously, as Representative Smyrie mentioned, there may be a lot of opportunities for the presentations we saw on the, on the health issues. That's sort of in their, their sweet spot of, if y'all remember, their primary focus is to train Georgia students that will end up practicing primary care practices in Georgia in underserved areas. So certainly some of those areas, as we can see from the GIS maps, fit some of the underserved definitions. And so, and y'all may know, they, they went to Plains and opened up a, and they're, they're staffing a clinic in Plains because clinic lost, I mean, Plains lost the only doctor they had and President Carter, who's on their board, said, hey, we need some help down here. And so what they did was set up a clinic there, they're in the process of setting up a couple of other clinics in southwest Georgia now. So that may be, we hadn't mentioned it, but I was, I was sitting there watching that presentation, it makes a lot of sense for us to encourage them to do that in some places in South Columbus maybe. So, so we're, we're excited about that getting going. And then moving into this year, y'all may have seen, I think it was in the paper or some press, yesterday we announced 60 in-home call center jobs for Norwegian Cruise Lines. And so there, they picked three cities in the southeast where they're going to hire, in our case, 60 people to do call center operations out of their homes. You know, it seems like a natural fit for military spouses, that kind of thing. So, but, but again, it's a, it's a new way of doing business recruitment and, and we were extremely excited. That came together very quickly. Brian did a great job of meeting the needs and the state brought us, I think, that opportunity and he, he jumped on it very quickly. Y'all are familiar with the new craft brewery project that's, I think y'all did some work on the zoning reg so we could get that going. That's 15 jobs going in on Sixth Avenue just down from the Chamber. And then there was a announcement, Columbus Tire Company on Victor Drive adding 10 jobs. So those, those are some of the things we've, we've been doing on this, this year. We've got a good pipeline, we've got nine really active projects, we've got another 19 prospects that we hadn't classified as projects yet, but there are a lot of good, a lot of good opportunities coming in the pipeline and we're, we're working those with, with due diligence. The other thing I wanted to mention to you was site development. Y'all know we've been working out at MTP, trying to get some, some land more sellable, if you will. I think since Brian came to Columbus, Brian Anderson came to Columbus, one of the things we've really spent a lot of time doing is improving our relationships with the state and the State Department of Economic Development. As y'all know, that, that's probably the primary line for new prospects and we've done a lot of work visiting with them, getting to know them. Obviously when the administration changes, you have to go back and do some of that work again, so we're busy sort of reacquainting ourselves with some new people, but a lot of people obviously carried it forward from the last administration. But the thing that they did, and when we had some site selectors come down and, and sort of do an audit of Columbus for us to get an outside view of what we needed differently, the two things they said were, in today's world, you've got to have facilities that people can move into, they don't want to come down here and build it, and the reason for that is they, they want to get the contract for the new business and then they want to acquire the new facility. They're not willing to step out ahead of new business and we're seeing that more and more. And it's one of the reasons, not to get too deep in the weeds, but we see a lot of, we start talking to people about projects and they won't pull the trigger and won't pull the trigger and then the project changes. And, and that's, you know, the, the speed of business is just moving faster and faster today, so things change. But as a part of that, we, we knew that the old NFL SPOSS money was still out there for us to do some work at MTP and so we committed to spending about $750,000 to make two sites site-ready, if you will. So we went out there and took a 17-acre site and we put an eight-acre pad on it and we're now in the process of taking a 23-acre site and putting a 13-acre pad on it. It still doesn't give us the ready-built facility, but that gets a company way down the road and it was, again, one of the two things that the, the state folks told us we really needed to do. These are a little bit of a test to see if it really gets us more prospects down here, gets us higher up the list of, on the priorities with the site developers to get people in here to look at our, our facilities. But we hope those are going to be well, I hope those are going to be well received and ideally, because we've put that kind of money into it, that if we get somebody down here, we can recoup some of those funds as opposed to having to just sort of give away. That MTP property is so geographically challenged with its top, with its topography, that it's really expensive to go out there and do this kind of work. And so when we bring people in and we tell them, this is the estimate we have to get this site ready, that sort of kicks us out. And so we're, we're testing the waters to see if we do that work and maybe we, we may have sold it at 50 cents on the dollar or if it's a really good project, we may sell it at zero cents on the dollar, but it'll at least get us back in the game. And so we think that's an important step for us. The other challenge that we have out there, and there's not as many mega-site projects as there probably used to be, but we've always had a couple of sites down at the, I guess that's the west end of MTP that we considered our mega-site. So somebody that needs 100, 150 acres, we started looking at that and really this all started when we got somebody, we got some engineering work done to say, on every one of these lots, we've got to be able to tell our prospects what the likely cost of mitigating water issues and moving dirt and moving trees is going to cost them. And when we started looking at the mega-sites, it was multiple millions and millions of dollars to sort of flatten out that very hilly terrain. And at the end of the day, we, we, we got a couple of mega-site prospects down here, but very quickly in the process, they just said, guys, that's not competitive to some farmland over in central Georgia somewhere that's flat and cleared and got sewer sitting out by the road. You know, y'all are, y'all are $8 million more expensive from the get-go. And so I don't think it makes sense for us to go in there and spend $8 million to create a pad on those sites. I think it's better for us to think of those as smaller sites where sort of the sweet spot of 40, 50 acres and we get somebody who needs, you know, 30, 40,000 square foot building on it. So in light of that, what we're doing is we've asked some folks to go out and really scour Muskogee County and the surrounding counties and see if we can't find potential mega-site locations where we can get maybe some rights to purchase it if we, if we ever get the right prospect, but to give us the ability to show a, a more competitive site. So we're working on that as well. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about was just some of the marketing things we've been working, as I told you, we've been spending a lot of time with the state folks and site developers. Several of us attended the Columbus State Capitol, Representative Smyrie mentioned that. We had a really good day, we were able to get in to see the governor and talk to him and lobby for the, the continual funding of the Mercer project. If y'all remember, we raised 13, 8 locally to do that and then the last hurdle was to get the state to commit to the ongoing support of Mercer. And, and that's what we went in and were able to, to at least tell him we, we really appreciated his help in that regard. In addition, we got to go meet with the Chancellor of the Board of Regents, Jimmy Yancey and I were able to go in with him, Chris Markwood was in with us and we got to voice our support for the robotics engineering program that we're trying to get them to allow CSU to do, and I think, I think that's going to happen. But, so those are two good projects. The rest of the day, I would add my comments to Calvin, to Representative Smyrie's comments, it was a great day, Columbus Tech and Columbus State both did great jobs up there, so I'm sorry y'all weren't able to go. I was sitting next to Bill Dudley and he said he does think it's scheduled for the third Tuesday, so I think we've got that date issue squared away, so I think hopefully y'all will be able to attend. Couple of other things, a couple of conferences we've attended, we've, we've gone to the robotics conference and Huntsville, talked to a lot of people, we're trying to sort of figure that robotics world out and, and how, how we can really be effective in pursuing it along with what's going on at Fort Benning. Brian and, and Michael Barker, who's the Director of the TESI Cyber Security, went to a cybersecurity conference in San Francisco, espousing what, mainly what CSU's got going on with, with trying to train people in cybersecurity. And then Brian went to a site selection conference in Chicago as well, espousing the benefits of being in Columbus. So we're working hard on those, those kinds of things, obviously doing some things with the new website and, and running some campaigns there, but trying to touch all the bases and it's, again, it's a tough business trying to recruit people from out of town. Our, our best opportunities are getting local companies to grow and so we're working hard on all those markets. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Carrick, I was glad to hear you talking about the robotics piece and the opportunities that we have there. I was talking with retired General Pete Jones just yesterday and he was talking about the conference that was here a week or so ago that was double the size of the conference that they had, I can't remember where he said the last one was, but, but Columbus is and Fort Benning are beginning to be known quite well off around the country for our interest in robotics. So I'm glad to hear that the Development Authority has also got that on your schedule. One of the things that I would also encourage you to do, the new College and Careers Academy at Jordan ought to be a fertile ground for our workforce here in Columbus. And I know that the, the folks at Jordan are more than willing to work with whoever we need to work with to make sure that that workforce is in place. And I think that we're going to hear some really terrific things from the College and Careers Academy. So I would also encourage the Development Authority to hook into that. Mr. Yancey is a part of that group and I would really encourage us to make sure that we're using all of these areas to get what we need. We were told, I was told a couple of weeks ago that we probably won't ever get something like Kia here because we don't have the land. And as you were saying, the mega-site, that's a, I don't know, several, I don't know, 100 million acres or whatever it is, but we don't have that yet in Columbus. And so I was glad to hear you say that you're looking at that and, and making some decisions about those kinds of things. I think that we're on the cusp and I'm hoping that the Development Authority is just going to pick up that ball and run head out. Thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you. Yeah, and, and I tell you, the, I, I agree with Counselor Thomas. I think that we're probably as well positioned at the state level as we've been in quite a long time. And I know Columbus Day was, was quite an experience. We, we had an opportunity to address the, both chambers, we, we addressed the, the House and the Senate. We had a chance to meet, we got 30 minutes with the governor and we also spent some time with the lieutenant, yeah. And it, and you know, that's a testimony not only to, you know, people tend to think that political parties sway the influence, but I tell you, certainly Representative Smith and, and the weight he carries in Atlanta was a significant asset, but, but so was the, the reputation and the credibility of Representative Smyrie on the Democratic side. So we, we, we really had a, a great visit. The Development Authority was, was able to, I think, firm up some existing contacts. We did get a chance to meet with the chancellor as well. And I, I think we'll see, there's a lot of momentum right now between Mercer and, and some of the things that are happening in, in the, kind of the northern end of the Liberty District. And it's, I, I think we're going to have some exciting announcements coming up, I would, I would predict in the next, next couple of years. But thank you so much because the Development Authority is, they're volunteers, these are folks who just deeply care about the community and that's why they do what they do. And it's, it's going to be an exciting time to be living in Columbus, I think, over the next few years. Thank you for your, your work.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Carrick. Next, mayor and council, I've got Columbus Visitors Bureau, CVB, with a quarterly update. Mr. Peter Bowden is the president.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Hughley, I skipped over the mayor pro tem, she had her light on, I apologize.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, a lot of this is going on because we have a mayor who's deeply involved and caring about what happens in this community. So as long as his attitude stays pumped up, the government folks will stay pumped up.
Yep, that is so true.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you. I'm glad I interrupted you.
Yeah. Well, thank you to Brian Salido too with the Development Authority, Chamber of Commerce, thank you for being here. of Commerce. Thank you for being here. Mr. Peter Bowden, Columbus Visitors Convention Visitors Bureau, CBB, president, CEO.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. What a fantastic, amazing morning with all of the information that's been shared. And I mean, it's just incredible sitting here, listening to the briefings of what's been going on. So again, I want to wish everyone good morning and thank you for the opportunity to update mayor and council. And city manager, I want to thank you for including us on today's agenda. Today's numbers may look a little familiar, but we thought with new mayor and council people that it might be good to review or remind everyone how the travel industry is impacting Columbus. And then also, at the tail end of our presentation, I want to touch on film and update you where we are with all of that. Tourism is big business for the city. It's jobs, it's wages, and it's new money that impacts virtually every sector in the marketplace. If we look at the numbers, for the second year in a row, we've seen significant visitation with 1.9 million visitors coming to our city. They spent $352 million during their time here. Again, this is new money that's opposed to money that's being recirculated or just turned over and over in the community. So this impact is significant for the community. Visitors to Columbus also supported 4,300-plus jobs. And obviously, these are jobs in the hotel industry, but it also includes restaurants, retails, and other service industry types of jobs. And these are not just entry-level jobs, but include middle management and above. Those jobs also represent $124 million in payroll associated with those hospitality workers. Again, big dollars, big money. $22.2 million in sales and lodging revenue is generated by that 1.9 million visitors on an annual basis for the city. This creates a $540 savings for Columbus households. And think about this, without visitor spending, the consolidated government council and government would have to find ways to make up that difference, or simply put, increase taxes by $540 per household just to maintain current services. So let's drill down just a little bit deeper and analyze what this means on a daily basis. Every day, there's an average of 4,200 people in Columbus. These are strangers that are in our community. They're here for business and leisure, and they're visiting friends and family. They spend nearly a million dollars every day in Columbus. Or each visitor spends, on average, about $190 every day in some form or fashion. And we'll get into that in just a moment. On a daily basis, visitors will spend $163-plus thousand eating out. And Columbus is becoming quickly a food destination. And we all have our local favorites from epic countries, Minis, Mabelas, Trivolis. We all have our favorite, and visitors are falling in love with our restaurant scene. Over $204,000 are spent in lodging every single night in Columbus. And everyone's favorite thing to do when we go on vacation and when we travel is shopping. Daily spending by visitors, on average, exceeds $191,000. Entertainment's a big deal as well. This is what people do when they're not eating and shopping while they're in Columbus. The art scene and recreation is big. It generates over $71,000 by visitors each day. And just in Columbus, 60,000-plus, excuse me, in sales and lodging revenue is collected by the city. That's every day by visitors. Now, this means jobs, and this adds up to local wages for hospitality workers, the segments that I mentioned earlier. Nearly $340,000 in wages every day is created by visitor spending. Now imagine just for a moment, if suddenly visitor spending stopped, if 1.9 million people stopped coming to Columbus, what would happen to the community? Jobs, businesses, a lot of the things that we take for granted would be impacted, or they may go away altogether. So we've got to remember that travel is not just big business for our community, but also contributes to our quality of life. All right, so let's change gear for a few minutes and talk about film. We've got some great news to share with you about what's been going on. Back in January, we had the privilege to attend the 2019 Sundance Film Festival to officially announce the Columbus Film Fund. And part of that, this public-private partnership that we discussed, we brought together three essential components to make Columbus Georgia's third film hub. We told a room of over 200 industry professionals that Columbus was training a certified workforce, that we'd added infrastructure with a Flat Rock Film Studio, and of course, the local film incentive that has been created. This is a $5 million fund to offset the cost of production in Columbus. And we've done this because the city is outside the major production zone, if you will, of producing films. This fund covers the cost of housing, meals, and produce, and the extra costs that it does that's impacted by doing film here, virtually eliminating those added expenses. And when you couple that with the noncash incentives that we put together, working in Columbus with film can actually be more efficient than working in a larger destination. In essence, this film fund levels the playing field. Since Sundance, we've had 20 prospects contact us because of our announcement, to begin that conversation of what it would take to bring their project to the city. From those 20, there are 80, excuse me, eight projects that are being discussed. There's some sort of negotiation going on. There's a lot of scouting taking place. We've designed photo packages that have been designed and mailed off based off of criteria. We've looked at budgets and reviewed on how we can build in cost savings, and so many more activities and steps in order to lure those projects here. Those eight projects represent $25 million with a $7 million local spend. I mean, when you think about it, it's amazing what's happened in just four short months. At Sundance, we premiered our promotional video that showcased Columbus as a film destination. And I'd like to show that to you right now. Just showing off just a little bit. As you can tell, the team's been very busy since the last time we presented to you all. And I want to thank them for their dedication, their focus, every day of coming to work and making things happen. Of course, I need to thank my board for its support, and of course, all of you for your confidence in us to get it all done. And again, city manager's not here at the moment, but I want to thank him for inviting us to present and update you on what's been going on.
Counselor Thomas.
Mayor, I shared with Mr. Bowden this morning, I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to talk with one of the, two of the producers who are coming to Columbus. They've decided to come to Columbus to do their film. And we were talking about what was going on in Columbus in the film business. And the two things that I want to say, one is they are working at Flat Rock Studio. And the guy said, you know, sometimes it's the little things that make a difference. He said, that facility out there not only is state-of-the-art soundstage and so forth, but it has offices in it for the staff that need the offices. And those offices are furnished. So we don't have to deal with that. And he said, it's just some of those little things that happen that make you want to come back here. And the other thing that he said that was no surprise to me was that every time he has said to Mr. Bowden or to Dr. Baxter or to whomever he's dealing with, this is what we need and this is the problem we're having, the automatic answer is, we can help you with that. And he said, they do. They help us with that. And so we're beginning to get, I think, the reputation for being able to help with that and to be able to do whatever we need to do to pull this. They said that Columbus is really positioned well to be a studio city because, right now, the places in Georgia that do most of the filming are the Atlanta area. And he said, you don't always want to go to the Atlanta area. And I said, yeah, I understand that. And he said, the other is Savannah. And he said, unless you're doing a beach movie, Savannah's not the place to be. Columbus is the place to be. So I'm hoping that we're going to be able to continue to tout this and to make Columbus one of the premier movie facilities, not only in the state, but in the country. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
It is exciting, thinking about some of the changes and things that are coming our way. And Mr. Bowden and Dr. Baxley and all the folks over there have done, man, they've been working hard. I mean, they've worked every single angle. So we're starting to see it bear some fruit. And I think it's fun to watch people discover what most of us have known all along, and that is, we're like every other city in one respect, and that is that we have challenges. And we work every day to meet them. But there is some absolutely incredible things going on in this community. And the people who live here, if you haven't bumped into some of those things firsthand, get out of your yard. Go visit some of the places that are available in this community and just breathe it in and take it in and see what other folks see when they come. It's a special time. And it's going to be fun to look back in about 15 years and point to this particular time period, I think, as a pivot point for this community. And I appreciate everything that you do to make it so.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Bowden. And Mr. Mayor, I've got a records management update. Our clerk of council, Sandra Davis, is going to be talking about records management update.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Good morning, ma'am clerk.
Thank you for the opportunity to present before you this morning. I wanted to talk today with regards to the trend as it relates to records management, as well as talk about some of the processes that have been implemented since I came on board in January. Council agendas. The first thing I wanted to do was provide a cohesive agenda. What I found was that when you wanted to look at the city manager's agenda, you would have to click on that agenda. If you wanted to look at the city attorney's agenda, you would have to do the same. What I wanted was one cohesive agenda so that the citizens of Columbus can look at the entire agenda first and then make the determination if they wanted to look further at other items. So they would click on the agenda and they could see the complete agenda. And then from there, if they wanted to further review other items, they could go to the agenda packet tab and click on that. What I also did was include an ADA statement. As the clerk, it is my responsibility to remain abreast of the changes in state laws that include open meetings, records, as well as Americans with Disabilities Act and open records laws. Agenda management software. The council did approve at the end of last year, agenda management software with municode. And I am pleased to announce that we will be going live very soon. We have user training that's going to be happening next month. And then I'm predicting the first meeting in June, that we will be ready to go live. We will continue to have dual systems available so that members of council and the citizens as well can conform to the transition that is occurring. We will possibly do that about three months or so, where we will have the dual systems available. The new format, in reference to the agenda, agenda packets, the summary minutes and official minutes. What I wanted to make sure is when a citizen clicks on the council agenda, they could also see the agenda packets, the summary minutes, as well as the official minutes. And these are the amendments that the council approves on Tuesdays. Also wanted to assign informational matters on the clerk's agendas to other areas. And one example of that is the temporary street closures. Thank you so much. And this is just a sample of what it looks like. I asked IT to put this together for me, even though I knew that this would be a temporary measure, because once municode comes online, then this would go away. But I wanted to start getting everyone familiar with how it would look. As you see, we have the dates, we have agendas, we have the E cap, which is the agenda packets, we have the summary, and we have the minutes. This is what I made reference to as far as the temporary street closures. I am of the opinion that it would be better served if the citizens could see the temporary street closures on the website. So if you would scroll down, if you clicked onto columbusga.org and scroll down, you would see latest news. Under that tab, you would see the notices of temporary street closures. With that, you see the date, as well as the streets involved that would be closed. This is a way, just to get the information out. This is a way, just to get the information out to the citizens. What IT has done is, once the event has occurred, this item will drop off the website. So, I thought that was a good feature to have.
Excuse me, Madam Clerk. Counselor Crabb.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'm wondering, is this going to change when the new program comes, when the council meeting agendas, minutes and summaries, is that going to be different? I was wondering if they could go backwards, you know, so like, the very, the current month is at the top? Because then we can just click on what's the most current instead.
Yes. Counselor Crabb, that's a great question. That is the plan, to have current going backwards, as you suggested. And it would look very similar to this, and this is why I wanted to go ahead and get it started, but it would look very similar to this with the Agenda, Agenda Packages and so on and so forth. But it would start, as you have suggested, with the most current date going backwards. Thank you. Council minutes. Wanted to make sure that there was a separation between the Summary Minutes and the Official Minutes. The Summary Minutes, these are the minutes that must be posted according to state law, must be posted within 48 hours of the meeting. The reason for the quick turnaround is because the requirement is limited in that what must be provided is who all is present, absent, and the action of the council. That's all that's required within, in the Summary Minutes. The Official Minutes, this goes into more details and makes, we provide what, the motion that is made, who makes the second, and which members of council voted for and against an item. And these are the Official Minutes that the council approves when we attend to have the Minutes of previous meeting listed for approval and published to the web page. What this is making reference to is that, once the minutes are approved on Tuesday, by Thursday, those minutes are posted on the website for the citizens and everyone to see at that time. Electronic minutes capability, this is something that I have been speaking with MuniCode about. We're in the process of transitioning out of Doc Depot and some of the other software systems that's currently available. And this would be a means of having minutes available. And the beauty of it is that you may have, you will have a search mechanism to be able to search items if by chance you did not know what meeting date you are needing to And this is what I was making reference to. Currently, MuniCode is allowing us to do a free trial till the end of June to allow us to put documents in their MuniCode library. And this is what you see are some minutes that I placed out in this system so you can kind of see what it'll look like. I have included minutes in some resolutions as well. This is what I was making reference to as well. When you don't know the meeting date or you don't know which resolution approved a certain action, if you would just put in a search of a particular word, this is what comes up. It shows you the resolution. The word I used was variance. And what it shows you is the resolution that approved this particular variance, and it also shows the minutes. Code of ordinances. One of the concerns that I heard from one of the previous council meetings was that the online version was not getting updated in a timely manner. So, what I did was reached out to MuniCode and I was able to work out a means of getting it done in a timely manner. The frames that MuniCode uses is e-supplements. What this is, is the updating of the online version. What I worked out with MuniCode is that they would update the online version, the code of ordinances that's online, within 14 business days. The codified version would continue to be sent to us and available on a quarterly basis. This is just a snapshot of our code of ordinances. As you can see, the ordinance that was adopted on February 26, 2019, they were published online March 6, 2019.
Including you. Mayor Protem.
Ms. Davis, what's the difference between the code of ordinance and the codified version?
Mr. Mayor?
The Mayor Protem is asking about the difference between the code of ordinance updated within 14 business days and the codified version continuing to be available on a quarterly basis. What's the difference in those two? Is that...
The difference is, Mayor Protem, the codified version, this is your hard copy. So, once the amendments are made, they are put in hard copy and those supplements are sent to the Clerk of Council's office. And they're both code of ordinances, but this is the online version. And this is the version that I'm hearing that most attorneys, judges and everyone uses on a more regular basis. And so, this one is the one that needed to be uploaded and updated more quickly. The other one is, the supplement is the hard copy.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
So, the hard copy, do they provide, make that available as there are changes or do they do it once a quarter, every six months, once a year? How do they do the hard copies?
What they do is they will go ahead and, once they receive it, they do codify and put it in supplement form. But what they don't do is send it out because maybe in the next couple of weeks, the council will approve more ordinances. And so, what will happen is they will combine all of those ordinances that are approved within that three-month timeframe. And then they would combine them into one supplement, and then that supplement is sent to the Clerk's office and distributed.
Yeah, and that's what makes sense because you're going to have changes throughout the course of the year.
Correct.
And you wouldn't want them to send a hard copy every time unless it's open and, you know, put one page in, one page out, you know?
That's correct. And then as far as the public agenda applications, the public agenda application was updated to reflect the changes that Mayor Henderson presented at the January 29, 2019 meeting with the consensus of council for implementation. What we have is the five-minute maximum time limit to speak on topics of discussion, as well as the additional three minutes that will be allotted at the end of the Clerk of Council's agenda. And then applicants must not address the same topic of discussion more than once every These last three are items that myself or the administration suggested. Must specify topic of discussion. No incomplete applications will be considered for listing on an upcoming agenda. Must initial each to state the following guidelines have been read and applicant will remain in compliance with these guidelines. This, that one does not look like my updated one, and maybe it's down. Let me, let me go down. There it is. This is a snapshot of what the public agenda application looks like. It does not do it justice. The IT department did go through and make those changes, and it looks much better online. But this is my snapshot version of it. What they also have included is that if the required field is not, if there is no information in a required field, they are not allowed to submit the application. That was one of the issues that we were having. Citizens would fill out the application, but some of the key information that we needed from them, they would not fill it out, but they still were able to submit it. So, this was something that IT included when they made the changes to the public agenda application. Also, as it relates to presentations, at first, we had all of the requirements and guidelines with regards to providing a presentation listed on the public agenda application. Now, only time that will be shown is when they would check that box. It's optional for the presentation, but they would get a drop-down menu to show them all the guidelines that they need to follow if they want to provide a presentation. That's just one more snapshot of those items that were included as presented by the mayor and, as I stated, myself and the administration included. Recommendations. What I'm recommending is board management software. I know at a previous meeting, the council was amenable to some type of board management. I just wanted to go ahead and move that forward if that is an option that this council would be amenable to. Also, I wanted to enter into the agreement for the MuniDoc's library for the electronic As I stated, currently, we're on a free trial basis with them. Want to go ahead and move forward. As I stated, we're transitioning out of Doc Depot and some other software, and so it would be great to have this library available. And then I'm requesting a change to the public agenda application deadline from 12 o'clock on Fridays to 12 o'clock on Thursdays preceding the Tuesday meeting.
When is the agenda put out there for publication on the web?
It's on Friday evenings, typically before 5:00.
Yeah, and I guess my only concern, and I don't know that it would make it any worse than it already is, but occasionally, when people see something on the agenda, that's when they'll want to get on the public agenda because it may not be a first reading or something. It might be a resolution, might be something that doesn't really allow for public input. I think by missing, the timing just seems wrong. If it's not published online until Friday night and then our deadline to get on there is even Friday at noon, but certainly Thursday, it just makes it a little tough for somebody that may want to speak. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, Mr. Mayor.
And I'm not sure what the answer to that is, if it's possible to get the agenda up there earlier or at least, well, certainly preceding the deadline. Just a question.
Well, you know, I need to think about how that might happen.
Yeah, and I think...
Because we try and have the agenda posted and available to the media by 5:00 on Friday. Now, and so if they post the agenda and someone sees the agenda, the only way that they're going to be able to come and speak on a matter that's already been posted, even if we posted on Thursday, would be that we allow them to speak at the end of the meeting or following that agenda item because, yeah, there's no...
Yeah, and I guess my concern was that, at the end of the meeting, that item's been voted on typically.
Then we'd probably have to let them speak on, we could allow them to send something to us after it's published. I need to think about it.
Yeah, I didn't mean to throw a curve in. I just, it's something that's always kind of, I thought was a little bit odd.
Yeah, and I was going to say, we could, even after we publish it, they could notify us on Monday that they would like to speak on a particular item on the agenda, and then we would have to make provisions for that at that meeting.
Counselor Allen, I think you had a question or comment.
Well, I was going to offer that we maybe generalize the agenda and not be as specific as we are at 5:00 on Friday when we publish it to give them a little taste of what's going to be on the agenda. But if it's generalized, then it doesn't really give them what they need to know whether or not they want to even talk about an issue. So, I would just leave it up to you, let you think about it.
It's actually always been that way. So, it's not like we're causing it. It's something that already existed. It's just, if we're going to consider moving the registration for the public agenda, I just thought it might be a good time to at least take a look at whether or not we could create an opportunity for them to read the agenda before they sign up.
Let me, I will think about it.
All right.
Try and figure something out.
City Attorney.
I was just going to say, let's think about that before we make any changes. The ordinance, the ordinance hasn't been amended, these procedures, since 2011, and the ordinance, of course, says now that they've got to make application by noon on Friday preceding the meeting. But the reason was always, we've got to get it out to the media for public notice, the summary agenda, and if anybody wants to speak, then they notify the clerk by noon on that Friday. But it's just a policy decision. I think it has worked well in the past, but like City Manager says, you need to study that before you change anything.
Okay. Counselor House? Do we need to vote on these first two items? I think the Clerk has asked for authorization to implement that software, entered in that agreement. Is that what you're... Might be good to get some pricing on that.
Well, and this is a work session, so if she wants to vote on something, she'll bring it back on the agenda.
Right. And it'd be good to see some, know what the pricing... Mayor Protem?
She'll also have to bring it to the committee, and I want to publicly apologize to Sandra because we didn't tell her that she had a committee, that she has to go to do certain things. And Counselor Allen and I want to apologize for that, but from now on, she'll know. So, those things will come back.
Good enough. Thank you.
I would like to end on a quote. For some reason, I've gravitated towards quotes nowadays. "But anytime you see a turtle up on top of a fence post, you know he had some help." And that is a quote from Alex Haley. But the first time I ever heard that was from the late, great Mr. A.J. McClung. And with that, I did just want to thank the council for allowing me to present today as well as having the insight to approve the Agenda Management Software. I want to thank the City Manager for all his input. He gives me a lot of guidance. And I also want to thank the City Attorney's Office for keeping me legally sound with some of my ideas that I come up with. And, oh, I can't forget about the IT department. They have done a tremendous job with, I just go down there and I give them this vision and they make it happen. So, I really appreciate the IT department, Shane Walker, and last but not least, the staff of the Clerk of Council's office.
And last but not least, the staff of the clerk of council's office who have been very extremely supportive. We have Deputy Clerk of Council Lindsey Glisten. Everyone's familiar with her, her great works. Also have two exceptional, outstanding employees, administrative secretaries, Brittany Jones and Tamika Colbert. They are the backbone of the organization and do a lot of work behind the scenes. So council may not interact with them as much, but they're, they are a great asset. And currently, I have a temporary employee, Shaquia Holloway, who has also been a great help to the office. And thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Right. Thank you so much. And if, if they're, if.
Counsel, excuse me, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if you need them to take action on something, we can bring it back at a regular council meeting.
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, though she is not on my staff, there's a discussion on night, National Night Out requested by City Councilor Judy Thomas.
Hits you button.
And I'm going to defer to her.
Hits, hits you button. No, I messed it up. There we go.
Mr. City Manager, I would be delighted to be considered part of your staff. I just wanted us to talk a little bit about the timing on National Night Out. As you are well aware, counsel, National Night Out is always the first Tuesday in August. And in Columbus, they do the activities around 6:00, 6:30 on that night. That is our proclamation night, and many times, we as counselors are not available to go to National Night Out because of the proclamation. And I don't know if we, I would like for perhaps, Mr. City Manager, the other people on your staff to come back to us with some kind of, perhaps, a suggestion of what we could do. And several of the things I've heard, one is that we not have a meeting at all the first, the, in August, that proclamations be done the other 11 months. One is maybe to change it to a different time, you know, put them, have that meeting in the morning in August, or at whatever it takes to free up that time so that counselors can participate in the National Night Out. That's, that was my request for this discussion.
And, Mr. Mayor, we can bring back a recommendation.
Okay, Mayor Protem Pew.
You may want to look at changing it to the third, Tuesday. That month. Because changing it to a morning meeting may be, may be defeating the purpose since we had it at night, so most people who weren't doing the bed and school can come in the evening.
That's certainly an option.
Okay. Very good.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
All right, we did have a request to go into executive session.
For one brief matter and litigation, and then we've had a request for a short discussion on acquisition of real estate.
Okay, motion to go into executive session. Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right, we'll go into executive session. Clear the courtroom.
Clear the room. All right, we are back in regular session. We have left executive session where we discussed, where we discussed litigation and potential land procure, acquisition of land. And we, and there were no votes taken. There's a, there's a motion to adjourn, and there's a second. But before we call the vote, we will let you know there's a budget review session, the first budget review session. You adjourn.
We're in a work session. We're adjourned.
So anyway, we, there will be a budget review session. It will, it will be done at 1:15. In the past, we've always adjourned because sometimes it's only two or three members. Okay. All right, well, we will, there's been a motion to recess. We'll be back at 1:15 with a budget review session. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are.
We're adjourned. It's two different things.
Adjourned.